Good afternoon, it's now 1:30 Tuesday, September night, so we'll convene the municipal council work meeting. Beginning with the roll call, starting with councillor.
George Handley.
Becky Bobkin.
Gary Garrett.
Rachel Whipple.
And Craig Christensen.
Thank you, Craig. Thank you for joining so early, Craig. I knew you were going to join at some point. So we're glad you're with us. And then I expect Catrice, councillors McKay and Hoban will join us shortly. Our first agenda item is to approve the following minutes, the August 19th work meeting and the August 26th board of canvas meeting. Are there any requested changes or objections to these two sets of minutes? If not, I'll declare the minutes approved by unanimous consent. Our first agenda item is an ordinance amending the zone map classification of real property, generally located at 1050 West, 100 North, from one family residential, R16, to the very low density residential zone, Dixon neighborhood. This will be presented by city planner Jessica Donakie, and we also welcome councillors McKay and Hoban. So with Craig online, we have a full call. Jessica, welcome.
Thank you. Yes, so as you mentioned, this is the property at 1050 West, 100 North. It's in the R16 zone, which currently allows for accessory dwelling units, and the property owner would like to subdivide it so that he can add an additional dwelling unit to the property. So here you'll see what it would look like if rezoned. It would still be surrounded by the R16 zoning. The applicant would have to upload an updated flat that's a condo flat, just meaning that each home is its own parcel and then the rest of the area is common area, shared between the two homes. The planning commission's concerns for and why they recommended denial were concerns regarding landscape and maintenance if the area is common area, owner occupancy, and then the fact that it would be spot zoned, surrounded by the rest of R16 zoning. Staff's original recommendation was to recommend denial because of this area, solely because this area allows for accessory apartments, which would be roughly the same increase in density. Are there any questions?
I think I read, Jessica, that there is no neighborhood plan for this neighborhood, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Thus far, we don't have.
But I don't know if I missed, is anywhere else in the city, do we have the very low density zone, residential zone?
We do. I couldn't give you specific neighborhoods examples off the top of my head, but we do have it elsewhere in the city.
Yeah, okay. Any questions for Jessica? Okay, if not, we'll see you later this evening, Jessica, to discuss this. Next, we have an ordinance amending the zone map classification of real property, generally located at 2525 West, 620 North, from R18, one family residential to the A11 agricultural zone. This will be presented by Nancy Robinson, one of our planners.
Okay, so one thing of note, after the staff report was written, just before it went to planning commission, this is part of a trust where some land is being split, and the property lines changed seven feet. So what is in the planning commission staff report and report of action, the acreage sizes are a teeny bit different, but what you guys have in your memo and for exhibit A are the correct legal definition and what the zone size is. So as you can see, this is what the whole parcel is right now. It's 9.61 acres, and then it's going to be divided into two parcels, one's 3.66 and the other one's 5.95. This, I can, let's see, that shows, this is how it's going to be split. And so this portion right here is zoned R18, and this is agricultural. So this parcel, they just wanted to make sure they got all of that parcel in the same zone, if that makes sense.
So just kind of square it off?
Square it off, so that one parcel is one zone, this parcel will remain R18, since it's just being split.
And just, go ahead.
So my understanding, I'm talking to him, is the mom died, the property is being split back up, he's going to move his property into the agricultural zone, right?
Yeah, I mean, there's a house on there, so I don't know if he's going to, you know, live in that house, but.
He already lives in the house already, and the rest of it is going to go to a sibling or siblings. So, yeah, it's the first time I think I've ever seen something going to agricultural from residential.
Yeah, it's rare.
So if you have any other questions about that?
I have a quick question. So in one of the exhibits, the maps, it said that that lower parcel cannot be developed without other changes. What's going on with that?
No, it can be developed. It just, so if you look, and they would just use that as its own where it stands right now without another subdivision proposal, as is it couldn't be developed. I think their plan is to develop in the future. You can tell that there are three stubbed roads, 2530, 2460, and 520 North. All of those are there in preparation for it to be developed in the future.
So it is not unbuildable?
No.
Okay, good. Because I thought that was an odd thing to have on the exhibit.
Yeah, thank you.
No, and I think that's the, I'm talking to him, I think that's.
Yeah, it just says on the thing that I have, it says parcel A is unbuildable unless re-subdivided into a different lot, parcel configuration.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for Nancy? All right, thank you, Nancy. We'll see you tonight.
Okay.
Next, we have a discussion regarding the owner occupant definition in Provo City Code, Chapter 14, presented by Malia Daly. One of our analysts.
Great, okay. Hopefully, this is simple. We shall see. I think I have a slide here, so as Gary said, this is a proposed tax amendment that the council office is bringing forward. We kind of took the initiative on this after this context here. So there is a current ADU application that will actually come to our next meeting on the 23rd for an ADU on Bannock Drive. And this is, they're applying to join the map of allowed parcels for ADUs in Chapter 1430. Previously, if you remember, this would have gone through the special use permit administrative process, but as we got rid of that, these ADU applications now go through the tax amendment process. So there's actually, I think, four or five ADUs coming by the end of the year, so this fall will be ADU heavy. But anyway, regarding, this is why this text amendment is here, the Hispanic Drive ADU application, through the staff report and the actual application process, and then the August 13th planning commission, the staff recommended denial based on owner occupancy requirements for ADUs, as outlined in code, and then also expressed in our many discussions on ADUs. The commission, though, recommended approval unanimously based on this one clause in the definition of owner occupancy. So if you listen to planning commission, they'll talk a lot about DIIA, that's what they're talking about, as a sort of loophole or exemption to be an owner but not an owner occupant, but still qualify as an owner occupant. So after our staff's review of owner occupancy definition, we found multiple clauses, not just this clause, we can address those later, that are confusing and conflict, not if, and not necessarily in word, but definitely in purpose, which is this clause here. It is confusing, and that's why staff recommended denial, because the way they read it, it's not an owner occupant, but the way planning commissioners did, they said, that's a clear loophole. Whether we like it or not, it is. So that leads us to here. So this is that DIIA, this is what planning commission pointed to as far as a loophole. So is that if an owner, doesn't have to be an owner occupant if they haven't claimed kind of an increase on the property in the previous year, the people haven't owned this property for a year, so they can't prove that they haven't claimed an increase, so then it's like a loophole. Anyway, complex there. So there's a lot of situations that D in and of itself is kind of confusing, but to just make this text amendment simple and something easy to go forward, we just suggested to remove the exemption, which is what this text amendment is here. So it's just removing that DII, which just gets rid of the loophole that planning commission pointed to. And it's just saying, you have to actually live on the property to be considered an owner occupant. There's no loophole here. So that is what we have written as a text amendment, is to remove the exemption. It removes confusion on a possible way for an owner to appease owner occupant requirement without living there. There's another, I mean, there's always just leave it as is and you can just figure it out. There's other option to clarify or allow the exemption, and if the council would like to do that, so have some sort of exemption process. For example, in this situation, if you listen to the planning commission discussion, it's a father and a son, who are, father and a daughter, who are the owners, and the father doesn't even live in state, but he's only on title, he's not on anything else. So she could qualify for a mortgage, and then she lives there and wants to have it as an ADU. And then eventually, once she has kids and has a family, she just wants to have, live in the whole house. So that's that situation. So the planning commission's like, well, regardless of that, the code does allow for it, currently is written on their understanding. But if the council does like that kind of context for an exemption and would like to kind of explore the idea of an exemption to the owner occupancy requirement for an ADU, then we'll need to have a discussion under what circumstances, verification process, whether that is administrative, or if we want to specify that out in code and have it be legislative process or legislative specific. There's a lot more questions there, which we are happy to do, and we'll need to clarify a couple other sections of code that are kind of confusing. But that's another process. So what we have written is the simple, just get rid of the loophole, and then it's easy to read, and you have to live, everyone on title has to live at the property in order to qualify to have an ADU. But we can explore other options.
And can you leave the exemption up there?
Of course, and Brian, fill in where I have left things out.
Call on Brian first. Okay, so Malia has done a great job of explaining a very complex legal technicality issue. The only thing I would change about her slides, which is really just, I say this in the sense of how other people might use them, I think what she has up there is good. I would not call it either a loophole or exemption, because I don't think either one of those actually exists. What does exist is a provision that doesn't make any sense and doesn't have any meaning. So, I mean, if you read the code literally, there is nothing about that paragraph that says you qualify as an owner occupant if you submit those documents. The only thing that paragraph says is that if you want to be recognized as an owner and you don't live there, you must submit those documents. Period, end of sentence. That's the only thing that that paragraph says. The argument comes, the applicant's argument, which is their technical legal argument is, well, but that doesn't make any sense. Why would you ask us to submit the documents if they don't mean anything? So their argument is, well, that paragraph must mean that you can qualify for an exemption, because otherwise, why is it there? But there's nothing about the paragraph that says that you qualify for an exemption. In fact, the argument that you qualify for an exemption directly contradicts the main part of D and what Malia has renumbered up here as Roman II, which says, if you don't all live there, you may not be deemed an owner occupant. Okay, so I would be very hesitant for my part, part to approve an ADU application based on that argument, because it's reading something into the code that's not there. Now, there's a legal argument, if somebody, if somebody applied and we denied it, and they took us to court, and they made the argument that this paragraph doesn't make any sense, unless you interpret it that way, could they win? Possibly. But I think that it's a reach for us as staff to just read, read an exemption into the code that nothing in the code talks about. But it's very confusing. I mean, the the language is definitely confusing, and that's why Malia and I had both said, okay, the simplest way to fix this is to just delete that paragraph, because then it removes the confusion. In my view, it doesn't actually change the substance of the law. It leaves the law the way that the law reads. It just takes out a paragraph that seems to be left over from something else and doesn't really mean anything. Now, the other option, though, is if you do think that there are circumstances when an exemption should exist, then we need to rewrite it and clarify what creates the exemption. Recognizing that, but first, let me back up before I forget to say something that, the only reason this was even relevant to the planning commission decision is because the question came up of, well, why would we approve this application to change the map if they can't qualify for a license anyway? Right? That's the only reason it's even relevant, because the real application in front of the planning commission is just, should we add this property to the map or not? Right? But again, as they talked about in the planning commission meeting, if it gets added to the map, it's on the map forever. Right? So if you thought this was a good place for an ADU, you could put it on the map even if they don't qualify for a license, and somebody in the future could apply for a license. Conversely, if you prove it now, just because the applicant applies for a license, it's going to stay on the property for forever, even if the next owner doesn't qualify for a license. Now that, which means they can't legally operate an ADU there, right? But anyway, back to this issue. You know, recognize that the whole reason we have this paragraph here, in my view, has been an institutional knowledge standpoint is because of this very kind of situation. I mean, our owner occupancy definition got put into the code because you have situations where, we had situations where parents were buying homes for their kids, transferring the title to their kids while they were still making the payments, and then and then the kids were renting it out. You know, they've got three people upstairs and three people downstairs because they're operating an ADU in the basement. So.
Wasn't this part of one of our recent changes? Or was part of the one that we?
No.
No?
No.
And this was there before?
Yeah, this was there before. Well, we changed, we changed the sham transaction section, and we also changed the section on proving what is your primary residence, which not.
Yeah, that's why I thought this was part of.
Which, not to get too far afield, but that's the other thing that Malia mentioned that's confusing if you want the exemption, because right now, we're just looking at the definition section. If you look at the ADU chapter, there's another provision in there that says in order to get a license, you have to prove that it's your primary residence, which is completely different, doesn't even use the same word that's defined here, right? So if you wanted the exemption, we'd have to clarify that, too, that that's not, that those two provisions don't exist. Anyway, that's just background about my reading of the code and clarification on what you're being asked. Wait, so that, as Malia very clearly pointed out, what you're really deciding is, do you want an exemption, in which case, we've got to answer a bunch of questions about what it should be and what it should look like, or do you not want an exemption? And if you don't, then we can just delete this language so that there's no confusion about whether one exists.
Councillor Handley.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, yeah, that's very helpful. It certainly seems a lot cleaner. I, my only question about this would be, does this affect the situation? So recently, I've had a couple of cases of colleagues of mine at BYU who've had like a year appointment abroad, and they ran into some difficulty renting their property out with a family member in the house. And I don't know if that's because there isn't an exemption for that kind of a situation. It's not a mission call, it's not the three-year exemption. Do we have, does this affect any, I'm just wondering if we have allowances, or is any flexibility around people who are needing to be temporarily away from the home for six months, less than three years?
Yeah, so the temporary leave of absence provision in our code does allow that. I believe with ADUs, they have to apply for that exemption, that period of absence, before they leave. But that's where we do run into some issues, that some people will leave and then apply going, oh, I shouldn't have done this. And our code specifically does say, under the ADU provision, that they have to apply for it before they leave.
But this doesn't, this doesn't affect that. I just, I just wanted to make sure. I like it. It seems clean.
Yeah, I'm off to removing it.
Councillor Rachel.
So I have a question about situations in which there's like a lease-to-own or rent-to-own type of contract, in which you would have somebody who is, you know, the primary borrower against the property owner. They're making all the payments, they're doing all of the work and everything, but the owner still has that ownership interest. If somebody's in one of these rent-to-own situations, because of the structure of that, would they not be able to have an ADU? And I'm wondering if this exemption here is designed for that type of situation as well?
It's a good question. I don't think the code, and if Scott can think of another provision or agenda way in, I don't think the code specifically talks about that. I know that we've, my recollection is we've talked about that before. I think we actually had one, seems like a while back, where I think it's a, it's probably an interpretation on the city's part about who the owner is. But I don't think the code specifically addresses it.
Right, because that person would have a nominal ownership interest, even though they wouldn't be the responsible party, they wouldn't be occupying.
So we've had a few instances where we run into that, where there's a an individual claiming they are the owner, but they aren't the ones on title, and that's where we generally go to. And the code specifically notes that the owner occupant is the one who is the recorded title owner of the property, whatever the entity is. And so we have, if any time that we, if we had a, an instance where an ADU was being requested for a lease-to-own property, they're not the title owners, so we wouldn't be able to approve it. I don't know how this specific provision may or may not play into that.
There might be, as I say, it occurs to me a couple, there might be a way to structure the transaction, but I think you would have to not do it in the typical way. You would probably have to do, you'd probably have to record the lease-to-own transaction, and maybe you actually have to transfer title to them with a reverter in the contract instead of how lease-to-own typically works. Maybe, but the codes, I think, doesn't contemplate it.
I tend to not like the lease-to-loan instruments. They're pretty exploitative for the most part.
Yeah.
Councillor McKay.
Yeah, I wouldn't even want that included in the option. Like, I think those fail more often than regular traditional mortgages, and it, where this stays with the house, and that could fall through, and it just seems messy.
The problem that we found historically, and you'll see this in our provisions up above about LLCs and stuff, is that for good or bad, every time somebody comes to us with a this special situation deserves special consideration, once we give it special consideration, other people start mimicking it to, to take advantage of the special consideration. And so that's just what we've found over the years, is anytime, anytime we give somebody a way to do it, then more people do it for not the same reasons.
I've been contacted by multiple people about these, and I'm curious, George and I are both wondering, do you have to get signatures of your neighbors or not? Some citizens were told they do, some citizens were told they don't. It seems to be a disconnect somewhere.
My understanding is they don't have to, but they can.
Okay.
And they can provide it as part of their application.
It reduces their fee.
Right.
Yeah, there's, there's a way to reduce the fee by going through that process rather than some other requirements of a typical tax amendment.
So it's just special use permit rather than?
Well, it's no longer a special use permit. I was just looking at that, that the code, that section heading still says special use permit. It's not actually. It's an expedited text amendment, right? It's a text amendment that you don't have to pay the fee for, and that you don't have to submit as many documents with. But otherwise, it's.
Yeah, it's still, it has, it's a land use decision, not a permit decision.
I think, this is just so messy, and I hate it so much. And I have citizens calling me saying that, you know, the person asking for the signature is saying things that aren't accurate, you know, saying that it's not about an ADU, it's about just their second kitchen, and they don't sign it, they're going to have their second kitchen ripped out, like.
We've been talking and coming to you about even taking it out, that signature line in there, because it's creating more problems.
Okay, I have another question. What about?
I got phone calls about that as well.
It's a disaster, and it causes so much in the neighborhood. This is just, this is not helping our neighborhoods.
So do we have two people that are lying?
Well, I have another question first. Can we just take it out altogether? Can there be no text amendment for an ADU? If you want an ADU, buy where you have ADUs. There's lots, there's 60, what, 60, 70% of the city that allows ADUs? So buy there.
I mean, we can take out the, we can certainly take out the
Process fee.
That entire section, we can talk, take out that section that gives the expedited process. The way the code is written, because, we'd have to think about, we'd have to think about an entirely different way to define where ADUs are allowed or not, because because there's a section that says they're prohibited in R110, except as shown on the map below. We can't prohibit people from coming and asking to have the map changed.
Why?
Because they have the right to file an application.
Unless you write down the addresses where they're not allowed, where they are allowed to be.
Yeah, but then you're.
Well, that's what the map is. I mean, that, they, they would, they could then come, they'd file a text amendment to change the list of addresses.
Well, for example, just Logan tried this when they first, when HB82 in 2021 started, Logan did this approach, where they just had these parcels have it, these parcels don't. Regardless of zoning, they like went parcel by parcel in the city. It just turned into an absolute nightmare, because people are allowed to then petition to say, I want my parcel to be.
People are always allowed to change your zone anytime. It's always an option.
Yeah, and they weren't even changing zoning. They were just saying, I want my parcel to be allowed on the allowed parcels list, and then it was like.
I assume that current, we have to allow for the possibility that any current zoning is not adequate for future purposes, right? That you want some flexibility and the freedom of citizens to be able to make that appeal.
I mean, you could, you could get rid of the, of the special, the expedited process so that they have to pay the entire fee. And if you really wanted to, we haven't done this very often, if you really wanted to, you could pass a council intent statement that says, we don't like these and don't intend to approve any of them. And staff could tell everybody who comes in to apply, you're unlikely to get this approved, but you have the right to ask.
So is this the only expedited zoning process we have?
Did we get entirely rid of the neighborhood?
Yes, yeah, that's gone.
This is probably the only one I can think of. I can't think of any.
So Brian, could you clarify something?
Yes.
So Malia is looking for a motion today related to this language and this exemption. And so we'll take action on that. And then how does this relate to the parcel next week, or the other four, she says, maybe coming by the end of the year, that would, that were filed under different, under the exemption? Could you just kind of? That were filed under different, under the exemption. Could you just kind of remind?
Yes, they, I, we talked about that, because that's a great.
Yeah, they're two separate. So this is talking about. Regardless of the zoning decision or the land use decision of whether they're added to the map or not. They would then have to go through the license process to get an ADU and qualify for that property that is now on the map. To be an ADU allowed property, which is then when this would take into place. So next week, when the Gibson amendment does come, they'll be asking, can I be added to the map that makes it a possibility for me to get an ADU? If you say yes, that doesn't mean they get one. Now they have to go through the ADU license process, which is where this definition of owner occupant. And all the lies, other licensing requirements for an ADU come into play.
And because, based on your motion today, there will be pending legislation addressing the. Like the license application before they actually apply for a license. Your motion today would actually control how that uh, uh, application will be had, because it's a. It's, we're, 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 we're looking at step two of the two steps, two step process, and the only thing they've actually applied for is step one.
I see, okay.
Which is why the planning commission hearing is kind of confusing, because they are determining like the step two, when we're really still in step one.
Other questions for Malia or Brian?
Well, so do we need a motion?
Yes, yes.
We need, well.
If you want to, if you want to remove the language, uh, we have that drafted, we can come back. Well, we've got it, it's got to go.
We'll go to planning.
It's got to go to planning commission first. If you wanted an exemption, then we would actually need to start a whole process of figuring out how to draft.
And if you're looking at doing additional changes, it would probably be best to do that as a separate.
Well, that's what I was lying. So we need a motion on this, but if we wanted to make a motion to have staff come back and. Make a proposal about uh fixing the.
Fourteen thirty.
Fourteen thirty. Can we also do that?
For sure.
Okay. So I would make a motion if we accept this proposed. Removal of exemption and a second, well, maybe I'll just stop there.
Stop there.
Here we have a motion by Counselor Hanley with a second by Counselor McKay. We'll call for a vote. Counselor McKay.
Yes.
Counselor Hanley.
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan.
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Whipple.
Yes.
Counselor Hoben.
Yes.
Counselor Christensen.
Yes.
So that motion passes seven zero.
And then I'd like to make a second motion that we request staff to bring back to the future work session, a proposal for fixing the. The.
Special use permit.
Fourteen thirty. Special use permit process.
What? Well, maybe I should wait to see if it's seconded. Well, let me clarify one thing though, because the easiest way to fix it is just delete the whole section. And, and for, it seemed to me like from the comments I've heard so far, that that's actually the preference. If, if by fix you mean something other than that.
Okay, I just didn't know if we felt like we needed to discuss that at more length and had, and look at the language or think through the implications of completely eliminating it.
Okay, so you're looking for a presentation.
That seems like what I want, but I'd also don't know for sure what all the implications would be. So I wouldn't mind a little more time thinking about it and hearing from staff what you recommend.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And I'll note that we should definitely change the name of it, probably. But this is the portion where it could be an individual owner or the neighborhood, the group of contiguous properties.
Right.
So we would want to know if we just wanted to get rid of it as the individual thing. Or if we also want to remove that kind of neighborhood pathway, which seemed to be popular.
Good point. Okay, so I interrupted before you got a chance to ask for a second.
Is, is Counselor Melissa's? Rachel. Is that part of Counselor Hanley's?
Well, I was, was just clarifying what's in this section that we would be looking at, that George has.
I think so, because I think his, I think his motion is for staff to come back with a presentation on.
Okay.
That entire section and the implications of changes would be, which would include what Counselor like.
Okay. Is there a second on Counselor Hanley's motion?
I'll second.
Counselor Catrice.
Which is coming back.
Yes, uh-huh. All right, well, any discussion? We'll call for a vote. Counselor Hanley.
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan.
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Rachel.
Yes.
Counselor Hoben.
Yes.
Counselor Christensen.
Yes.
And Counselor Catrice. All right, so that motion passes seven zero.
We should turn our new.
I know, I know, it's, I.
Hey, so like we said, this, the owner occupancy definition, that will go to planning commission and then come back to you.
Yes.
And next week, we will hear the Gibson ADU text amendment. Yeah, no, yeah, the twenty-third.
All right, great. Thank you, Malia. We now have a presentation. Regarding the front runner, a two tracks project proposal. This will be presented by. The project director of UDOT, Brian Allen. Welcome. Oh, hi there. Hello, are you Brian?
I am.
Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to speak. To have a quick presentation, we have forty-five minutes to go over this. I've. Uh, like to introduce myself and some of the team I brought with me. Brian Allen, I work for uh UDOT, worked for UDOT about twelve years. My background's in civil engineering. Um, I've done projects across the state. Before working on front runner, I worked on a, a bigger highway. So I'd like to introduce, do you want to introduce yourself, Mike?
Yeah, happy to. Um, Michael Richardson, I'm the uh, the right away the agent for the.
You guys are talking, can you talk?
No, it's ready. Yeah, no problem. Michael Richardson, I'm a consultant, I work for HDR Engineering. I'm uh the right away the agent for the project.
Hi, Autumn Hu, I work for UTA and I help with the environmental clearance for the project.
Hello, I'm John Bure, I work for HDR Engineering and I'm the lead design engineer.
Hi, Kimberly Rivers, I'm the ex actor supporting the public involvement communications.
Well, I will dive right into the presentation and make sure people are still here. I'm just pulling up my notes to make sure I don't forget anything. So we're here to talk about the front runner two X project. Um, the project is sponsored by the Utah Department of Transportation, um, and it's being worked on with UTA. The, the state government has appropriated about eight hundred and fifty million dollars uh for this project. Um, most recently in the twenty twenty-three session, they appropriated two hundred billion. They actually created what's something called a commuter rail fund, which has ongoing funding to support. Um, the, the development and long-term build out of front runner. So front runner is really the backbone of the transit system. Um, all the transit, main transit lines feed into front runner. And the state recognizes it as a priority to really be a multimodal solution that, that's needed, right? I think we've heard it many times. If you have the opportunity to hear Carlos speak uh at any conference, uh, we can't build ourselves out of congestion, right? We can widen I fifteen all we want, but it's not going to solve all the transit, all the traffic issues that we have in the state. Uh, I personally live up north. Um, I commute uh to Salt Lake and it is not enjoyable. Um, I have a lot of colleagues that commute uh from actually this area to um Salt Lake and I've heard it's even worse. So um, just want to kind of start out with a high level overview of what this project is. And we'll dive into a little bit of more of, of why it's important, but just a high level. Um, I think we can all relate to the, the need for the project.
Question already, Brian.
Yep.
Counselor McKay.
Right, I've just got to ask. I'm so curious why we need to hear about this from you and we heard about it from citizens first.
That is a great question.
That's just really irked us.
No, no, it worked me too. Um, that was just, honestly, it was an oversight in the way that we delivered this. It was, it was a mistake on our part. So um, our intention always was to come to this body and present, this is your community. This is where you live, this, you guys know this community best. Uh, we've been coordinating with some of the, the civil, like more engineering elements. Um, however, we posted a study online that uh kind of. We didn't realize had some of the, the apartment acquisitions on there, so, so we got some questions about that. And I'll get to that during the presentation. So that was, that was never our intention and um, we really value and. I mean, I love working with cities. That's one of the reasons why I.
I think whenever you're going to be taking some of the land in our city, we should know about it.
Totally agree.
Soon as you know.
Yep, yep, totally, totally agree. And thank you for that. Thank you for that comment, so. So keep on going through the presentation. Um, as I mentioned, um, our freeways are congested. But also front runner is congested, especially from Salt Lake or Provost to, to Salt Lake, the section. Where it picks up all the people in Utah County and starts heading into Salt Lake both in the morning and the afternoon. We're seeing ridership on average, uh ninety percent seated capacity. So the, the purpose of this project really is to, to alleviate that capacity by adding more trains to the system. So the more trains that we add. Uh, not only do we add more seats for people to take front runner and um more sitting and standing capacity, we also. Attract new riders, uh, because that frequency makes it a lot more convenient, right? Right now you go to the train and it's every half an hour, somewhat convenient. Um, but think about every fifteen minutes. You don't even really need to have your watch scheduled anymore. You can kind of just show up and front runner will be there. Soon to, to, to provide a ride.
You're, so you're going to add trains, but I assume you're also, they're not going to be on the same schedule, stopping equally, right? It's going to be an expedited one that doesn't stop all the time?
No, so it will be similar service that will stop at every station, all stations.
Oh, really? Okay, sure, I'm expedited one to the airport or Salt Lake.
No, no, that takes a lot more infrastructure to do that. So you'd have to have bypass tracks, uh, trains to catch each other. Long term, that might be something that, that's developed, but it's not currently in this project. So they're called express trains, is what I've heard it called before. And it sounded really cool. You do have them at like California and, and bigger metro areas. So the benefits for front runner, I've already touched on a little bit of this. It's really just the, the increase in service and convenience. Uh, making transit more convenient, more reliable, um, increases ridership, it reduces congestion. It provides a better alternative to I fifteen, as I talked uh before. Um, as front runner continues to have. Less, or as I, I, as I fifteen continues to have more congestion. Um, and we can't really widen it to address that congestion, front runner won't, right? Um, it will have a smooth ride. So we're looking at by twenty fifty, front runner is going to be almost twenty first percent faster on average than I fifteen. I love it when I get a ride on front runner, especially because I work on it and I get to see all the cars in the parking lot. It's, I'm a little torn because I work for UDOT also. Um, but um, it's definitely um, provides a lot of value. And as we increase this ridership.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Um, we have projection uh that we're going to increase ridership by about fifty percent by twenty fifty.
Yes, the one thing I get asked is, why not just add more frequent trains? Why are we doing two times the tracks?
So I'll show you, actually, that is a great question. And I have a little video right here that explains it. So we can just jump to this video, because double tracking can be a little confusing. And it's like, why don't you just double track the whole thing? And, um, so I wanted to see if this, does this work here? It's always a little dicey to do videos and presentations in places you have a bear hat.
I'll throw out another session while you're, you can answer later if you have to, but is there any contemplation of Sunday? Uh, opening Sunday uh services?
Yeah, so UTAs talked about that a long time. That, that apparently not the scope of this project. Um, I would have to get back to UTA and, and um, get answers to you.
I have another question. So I, I've lived here forever. There's always the rumor that the church makes you not open on Friday with some deal you made with them and they gave you money.
As far as I, that's not true. I, I work for UDOT, so I don't talk to explicitly to like UTAs service scenario.
Okay.
But I've never heard that.
It's just that there's not enough service. Is that the idea that there's not enough usage on?
What I've heard is they use Sunday, like, for example, that's the only day they're not running. So they get out there and do your track inspection, maintenance, and then. If I had to venture a guess, it would just, it wouldn't be as high ridership demand.
Right, so, okay.
Just speaking as an employee of BYU, it's the number one day of travel for, um, for professors is coming for conference travel. So I love taking it to the airport and then I can't take it home.
Oh, that makes sense. Yeah, you fly in on Sunday and.
Just like not, not useful.
Every conference I go to, I usually fly in on Sunday to have the meetings.
Will this video also address why you can't just add more cars to one train? So let's add more cars to one train and make the trains more frequent.
I could address that right now. Um, so we're actually pursuing a federal grant as part of this project. And the federal grant doesn't let you just add more cars. The car, the, the federal grant is called the core capacity grant through the capital investment grant program through the federal transit administration. It actually is a requirement that you increase the capacity of your system by ten percent through means other than just adding cars. That is one idea and that is one. Area we will pursue, especially as front runner continues to grow.
Why do you think they'd make that a provision of the grant?
I don't know, I think. I think they're really looking for infrastructure improvements on large systems that are, that are, that are successful, right? I mean, this is really putting money into a system that is working well, uh, that continue to work well and with some, you know, enhancements that can serve more people. So. They have other programs we can, we can buy vehicles too. So I think that's, they kind of geared the program to its capital investment grant.
Probably. You got a train every thirty minutes during peak time, which is great, but Utah is wrong. You know, which means more people will take the train. So as time moves forward, we're going to need more trains more often. But here's the thing, you can't just stick more trains on the track. It's not that simple, which is why we have the front runner two X project. To get us twice the trains from one every thirty minutes to a train every fifteen. Here's how it works. Most of front runner is a single track like this one right here. That other one is from coal and, I don't know, Amazon packages, things like that. Front runner doesn't use it. So we have one track for both directions that then separates into two tracks or a double track at each station. So trains can get around each other. Computers coordinate this. It's very sophisticated, very safe, but sharing that single track limits how often trains can arrive at stations. So for instance, say you just missed the train. Okay, you're waiting for the next one and it's thirty minutes away. Now, if we just added another train right here, it'd have to stop because this train is on the single track. But we don't want to stop, except when taking on passengers. So instead, front runner calculates the most service we can provide without having to stop the trains. And your original train is part of that calculation. It arrives at the single track right as it opens up. The additional train wouldn't make any difference. And calculation will show that the most service we can get on front runner is thirty minutes between tracks. Okay, that one leaves, you wait thirty minutes, another one shows up, you get the one. And if we want that gap any shorter, well. Actually, go back to the train, try the single. Okay, this is you, you missed the train, next one's thirty minutes away, but this time, let's extend the double track. Now the other train gets off the single track sooner, which means we can put that other train on the tracks. And just like that, we have a smaller gap between trains. And that's our plan. We are extending the double track in key areas all along the eighty-three mile from recording. Giving us more trains with a smaller gap between them, from thirty minutes to fifteen minutes during peak hours. And from sixty minutes to thirty during off the time. That's twice the double track, twice the trains, twice the departures. That's the front runner two X project. So next time you miss a train, you know another one isn't far behind. Learn more about the front runner two X project at frontrunnertwoxutah.gov.
Okay, we, we need that video.
It's online. Like, I can, if you Google front runner two X, it will be on our, our project website. Along with the project map and it has a little more detail of each project segment. I think it's really.
I didn't catch the video and materials.
But again, it's kind of hard to with PowerPoints and videos. Uh, it's a slide, but it's like, is that a video or? You know.
Kevin, can you just email us the.
It's a little funny.
The video.
Hopefully that explained, and we've, you know, somewhat complicated, but the video does a good job of simplifying a somewhat complicated concept. In uh, of, you know, why the double tracking is needed and how it allows trains to pass each other. In practice, it gets a lot more complicated uh due to the, you know, the length of the system and different spacing between stations and things like that. In practice, it gets a lot more complicated, uh, due to the, you know, the length of the system and different spacing between stations and things like that. So this, um, this map shows the double tracking, um, throughout the corridor. Um, you'll notice that, um, we have twelve segments, uh, we have one realignment. Um, and the segment that we're talking about today is the North of Provo. Uh, you'll notice that it's a small segment, it's really smaller than the rest of them, but it's a very important segment. Mainly because it's really, it's right after the train enters the station. Um, and having the flexibility to direct trains of different ways, different sides of the platform, especially in Provo is very important.
That's some complicated tracking there.
Are you drawing it?
Right across the lake, huh?
So basically, you know, having that double tracking. Next to a station really allows operations to be improved. It's very vital to allow trains to pull out, move in. Especially when we stage multiple trains here in the evening and in the morning to allow for the service. Because you know, you know, you don't run everything right out of, as you have trains coming into the city in the morning. Obviously, this double tracking section wasn't done with the original project due to its complications. Um, as we see, it's a, it's a very challenging section, double track. And I go through the different options that we looked at. Any questions?
So this project, Brian, is not related to extending the line farther south.
No, not at this moment. You can see throughout the project, we have about three hundred fifty parcels, we're clear made with multiple cities, multiple utilities all throughout.
And then where this is a strategic double track, um, that's to say that if we wanted, if the state wanted. In ten years to, um, have trains every ten minutes, there would still be ways to do that by adding more double track.
Yeah, so it's like, um, the state actually created a special fund called the commuter rail fund. Um, it gets a portion of, um, can't remember, it's fifty or sixty million dollars a year. Um, that's really intended to double track the entire system. You know, you have double track throughout the full corridor, you have a lot more flexibility to run different service, like you said. You have the ability to run one more reliably. Say there's an issue somewhere in the system, you can route trains around it, because now you have two tracks. Um, so that's really the long-term vision of front runner. To to not have to do a strategic double tracking, but have a a more robust double track system, so. And and also extended. I mean, that's, we're working on an environmental document right now to prove it a pace in, and they're looking at extending it to Brigham City. Um, however, really looking at strengthening the core of the system, where ridership's the highest right now, and there's an obvious need. Um, that's the focus currently.
So when do we expect it to advance to patient or to?
Don't have a timeline, they're working on a NEPA document, I am not on that project right now. Um, I know they're working on different alternatives. Um, there's no funding identified for the construction though. So our timeline, um, we're completing our environmental documents right now. Um, we've actually procured a a final designer and contractor, uh, to help us advance these concepts. Um, toward construction. We're using a delivery type called progressive design build. Building these tracks around different trains, um, and phasing is complicated, so we got a contractor on early. Um, to help us understand how to build this. To allow us to to be more successful, we figured that was the the risk profile really allowed for that. Um, we anticipate construction in twenty twenty seven. And we're trying to get complete by twenty thirty, so. Any questions or? So, um, this is the North of Provo double tracking section. I want to go over the two main alternatives we looked at. Um, as you can tell right here, um, in the double tracking section, I'm worried about touching the board now. Okay, so this is a, this is UTA track. And you can see right here, UP has two different tracks. So we looked at.
But Union Pacific.
Yeah, you, but they, you, I just, it's Union Pacific Railroad, UPRR, and one of the, if not the biggest class one railroad of the the West Coast. So we looked at two different options. Um, we looked at, um, relocating Union Pacific, so Union Pacific runs freight, right? Um, so they have different standards, so when you move freight or you build freight, tracks have to be a lot further apart than one another. Um, typically twenty feet. And they also have very robust standards for drainage and typical things like that. So as you see, when we start looking at relocating UP, the foot, the footprint required to re- relocate UP becomes bigger. Because just all, we have, whenever we lay anything out, we lay it out to current standards. Um, we also looked at another option is adding a track to the, to the west of. So that's the two different options I'll go through, um, the east and the west and. Um, ultimately discuss why we elected to move forward with the with the west option here for the project. So you can see right here, um, as I mentioned before, the west option or the east option, excuse me. We're adding, uh, UTA track to the east of the current track and it relocates Union Pacific. So in order to relocate Union Pacific, it pushes everything. So now we have to relocate the Amtrak station. And the Amtrak station has to be parallel to the track, so we have to push the Amtrak station down here. And start getting into all these parking lots in this area. Um, so here we have the the right of way, or just proposed right of way highlighted and white blue. So as we start impacting these buildings, we have to start buying more right of way to accommodate the relocation. Um, as you keep on marching along here, you can see we impact this south, and that pretty much has to go away with the relo- with the relocation of Union Pacific. And as you can see on the, the impacts continue until we have to realign this intersection up here due to the the addition of the the double track. Um, so those are a lot of the challenges and cost drivers that we identified with the east all, east option. Um, we have to summarize in a table, um, after, um, we went to the west option. So the west option, um, pretty much takes the switch right here, so you have two tracks currently. And you have a switch, a switch is where two tracks need to become one. We remove that switch and just connect the dots between the two double tracking sections. Um, this double tracking section obviously has some impacts or impacts these these units right here. And due to a utility relocation, we have impacts to this unit right here. However, due to the ability to control design and how UTA puts their trains a lot closer together. Uh, we're able to keep the right way and pass a lot more contained within the, within the corridor. So this, this table summarizes the different, I guess, key points we looked at, and I I kind of discussed those, just it's nice to have a summary slide. Costs. So in order to relocate Union Pacific, we have to buy a lot of right of way. So we have to buy that right of way, we have to build a new rail, railroad, and then we have to build our tracks. So all those infrastructure requirements really drive up the cost and the schedule. Because you have to buy the right of way, you have to work with Union Pacific to relocate that track. Union Pacific can be a challenge to work with, however, that's really the drivers, the cost and the schedule. And being a a good steward of of taxpayer funds. We also looked at other items in the area, um, I talked about the Amtrak station, um, impacts the local roads. And then, uh, right of way and and business impacts. The west option did have, um, uh, more impacts that required relocations, however. So after looking at all these options, uh, we liked to go with the wa- west option. That allows us to implement these improvements at a more efficient cost and quicker. Um, to allow people to have the benefits of the project sooner. Also avoids some other impacts that that we kind of discussed at going through the east and west options. I don't know if there's any questions, if that makes sense, or kind of our line of thinking.
One question is probably just one of curiosity, if you are able to avoid those conflicts with Union Pacific along the entire corridor.
No, we haven't.
In other areas, you'll have to deal with that.
Yeah, so, uh. The real challenge here is is typically if Union Pacific has right of way to relocate in. Um, they have to have enough right of way to preserve a future track, that's a requirement they have. And they have, and, uh, so here they they have limited amount of right of way. But there was no areas where we impacted them, where we didn't relocate them within their own right of way, if that makes sense. That's really what makes this this area so challenging, is just so constrained, constrained from the UP and the UTA perspective. So in Oregon, we we chose to relocate them, but the bridge was built, and that was kind of the plan from the get-go. Uh, Murray, they had a lot of right of way to relocate them, and Murray, that's in a yard track, that they had, so we were able to work with them on. Um, however, the majority of these double tracking sections, um, we are not relocating. Not relocating them, not relocating them, not relocating them, not relocating them, we're winding to one side, impacting, uh, businesses along the, along the corridor. Unfortunately.
I do have a comment, though. I appreciated this part, this section of the document. Because this was one question that I was asked, is when there's businesses on the other side, I wouldn't relocate residents, why not just fit? So I did appreciate that.
Thank you. Once again, we will do better next time to make sure. Because there will be more double tracking and and as this project moves on, we'll make sure to provide updates and with the city to to figure out what kind of communication that you could buy. Um, from project updates. So, um, whenever we do a project, especially a federal project, we complete an environmental process. We did two brought, two documents here. We could complete one called categorical exclusion, which just go through and and looks at the impacts. NEPA is not about telling you what you can and can't do, it's about making informed decisions. Looking at Autumn to make sure I'm saying that right, because Autumn is not the expert. The planning and environmental linkage looks at our increased service. So we really did a catex to focus on the infrastructure improvements, and then the PEL looks at the. The adding of the trains for every fifteen minutes. Um, so one of the the key items that comes from the environmental document is the commitment from right of way impacts and looking at right of way impacts. You can see right here, we have, um, relocations and purchasing of the mass, uh, the not through condos. Um, also you have a purchase of this condo also. Um, here we have some noise impacts, we'll all get into a little bit later. We believe we can keep these, uh, these, this condo in place. There, you can see they're set back quite a bit, where these condos are really just right on the track.
Question here, Brian.
Do you have one first?
No, go ahead.
So the question I have is, will you guys be replacing? Will you guys be adding any kind of noise or sound walls?
Well, I'll get to that in a bit. That's, that's a really good question. Yeah, same question. It's it's usually right of way and noise, it's like the the two in, like, the main.
Well, I just wanna know how tall they're gonna be too, because I've heard from engineers that a ten-foot wall is not gonna really. Anything at all.
Okay, okay, so, we're gonna talk a little bit about the right of way acquisition process and relocation. Mike, uh, has, he's an expert in this and he can answer anything. I can give you a high level overview. So we have to follow all state federal laws, it's called the Uniform Relocation Act. Uh, we hire independent appraisers to go appraise the property. Um, when we're actually relocating a person. We, um, we, there's a lot more benefits that go into that. We do a housing study to basically look at what their house is now that they're living in. And if they want to go buy a house, what that looks like and what that price differential is. And if there's, you know, for example, we don't want to put anyone in a worse situation now. Our goal is really to make sure that they're taking care of. So we do a housing study, we also look at their interest rates, when we pay moving costs, all those items go into the relocation of a person.
So, for example. Let's say I bought one of those condos that Meadow, whatever that is. Let's say I bought it for a hundred thousand, nine thousand dollars twenty years ago. And I still owe maybe sixty thousand for reasons whatever, and I have a two percent interest rate. Would, how would that work? Would you guys just say, if I went and found one that was comparable, like, two bedrooms, two baths condo?
Question just to make sure.
Am I gonna have to, or will you guys just go ahead and do that? So I have like a sixty thousand dollar mortgage? With a two percent interest rate, or am I gonna get stuff of a sixty thousand dollar mortgage with a seven percent?
So, three questions, you want me to speak? All right, it turned out so good there. Um, me, this, this is going to work is, Brian, I think you did a, you did a good job explaining. We're gonna have an appraiser come out and value the property. So I'm just gonna use round numbers, like you used sixty thousand, right? Um, so city appraiser comes out and the, I have no idea what these homes are worth, or these units. But say it's three hundred thousand. You owe sixty thousand on the loan, right? So you're gonna have two hundred forty thousand dollars in equity. Well, what we're going to do is, we're gonna go look for homes that are functionally equivalent to what the owner occupant has now. Um, and by functionally equivalent, I'm talking, you know, similar square footage, bedrooms, bathrooms, things like that. Let's see if it was a home, like a single family residence, we look, you know, if it's a a Rambler, we only look at Ramblers, that sort of thing, does that make sense? And so what we do is, we understand that what they're, what these displaces are paid for their home. May not be enough to get them into something that's functionally equivalent or similar. So we go and look at the market and see what homes are listed and available today. And we, um, based on, you know, the certain characteristics of the property. We narrow it down to three homes that we think are the most comparable or functionally equivalent. And of the three, we select one for the basis of the relocation study that Brian had mentioned. So, just using round numbers again, if the appraised value for that, the home that you mentioned was three hundred thousand. If, um, the most comparable home that we can find that's available on the market is three hundred and fifty thousand. There's a difference there, right? Of fifty thousand dollars. That fifty thousand dollars, um, becomes what's called a replacement housing payment. This is going to be something that the displacy is entitled to, um, on a spend it-to-get-it basis. In order to put them as an additional payment, to get them into something functionally equivalent, so. I just went a really long ways to answer your question. If they owe sixty thousand, they have two hundred and forty thousand dollars in equity. If they use all of that to put that as a down payment, plus the fifty thousand, they'll, um. Essentially, they'll still have a sixty thousand dollar mortgage. Now, there's the difference of the interest rates. So, um, Brian also alluded to, um, what's called a mortgage interest differential payment. So it's a calculation that we run on the existing mortgage balance, the sixty thousand at a two percent interest rate. We find out what it, um, would cost to have their new. Uh, mortgage, which saves a six percent interest rate. What it would cost to have that amortized at the same rate, the principal and interest of their existing rate, uh, two percent rate. So this is another supplemental payment that gets made to them, and they can use it, you know, as another portion of their down payment. Or the, or schools we cost, whatever they want. But the idea is to buy the balance down. So it's still, they still have the same principal and interest moving forward.
Do you allow, like, you guys just purchase the home and I move in? And then I still have that sixty thousand thing, or do I still have to look for my own?
You have to look for your own, and you have the free move choice. You don't buy the home that we select. A lot of times, people don't buy the home that we select. We just choose that home for the basis of the study, and people usually take the opportunity to upgrade, you know. I've dealt with a lot of people that have built their dream homes, you know, I mean, because without this coming along, they might not be in a financial situation to, to do as such.
So considering those differentials, you said that they're paid if they use it right away. So, but they they can upgrade and use it right away, or does it have to be used within those parameters?
Question. So it's a spend to get it, I'm gonna first explain that really quick and then I'll get to your question, okay? Okay, so if they buy something, using the same example, they buy something for three hundred and twenty-five thousand instead of the three fifty. They only get the twenty-five thousand difference instead of the fifty. If they buy something for three hundred thousand, they don't get to use it. But if they buy something for four hundred, five hundred thousand, they, you know, they're, they're upgrading, and so they get to that cap. Now, the, the typically what the regs say is, um, these displaces. Are required to own and occupy a, you know, a new residence within twelve months of the displacement date. That's when we present them with all of their benefits and then the, um, the offer to purchase their home. And then they have up to eighteen months to submit any sort of relocation claims. The department has a little bit of flexibility on the timelines, so it's really gonna be on a case-by-case basis if people need an extension to those timelines.
Are you saying you give them money after the fact, or if they can't pay the down payment?
We give it to them at closing for the purchase of their new loan. So we process a claim form for that fifty thousand dollars in that same example, the replacement housing payment. We'll come up with that calculation for the mortgage interest differential payment, see that's another twenty grand. We'll have seventy thousand dollar check waiting at the title company.
Okay, so it's all adjusted. Okay.
Yeah.
One more question. Um oh, for the ones in Provo. Are you displacing mostly renters or homeowners of those condos?
We're digging into the logistics of that.
You don't know yet?
We don't know yet.
I do think it's important to talk about the the renter benefits too.
Yeah, I can give you an example of what the renters get, okay? So if a a property is is uh tenant occupied, the property owner gets the fair market value. Um that's established by the independent appraiser. Um the tenants, however, it's a little bit different. Um what we do is we look at the utilities they pay per month plus their rent. Okay, so these round numbers again, say their rent's a thousand bucks, utilities are a hundred dollars. I know that's a pipe train, right? So that's eleven hundred dollars. We go and look at the market and we have the three two bedroom, two bath, and that's what's considered decent, safe and sanitary for the family. We do get in these circumstances where we we find, we we usually move them as we find them. But if if it's not a safe situation, so say there's five people living in two bedroom, five adults living in two bedroom home. We don't relocate them into a two bedroom home. We have to follow the regulations and get them into something that's considered decent, safe and sanitary and meets the needs of the displaced uh family. So what we do is um using that eleven hundred dollar example, we go out and find rental properties that are available on the market. And we run an average, there's um the utility allowance that we go go on and that's based on the square footage of the home. Whether they have, you know, gas or electronic um stoves, heating, things like that. Anyways. If we find that the replacement property is fifteen hundred dollars including utilities. There's a difference of, you know, four hundred dollars a month. What we do then is we take that four hundred dollars and we multiply it by forty two months. And that becomes the tenant's uh rental assistance payment. Typically, again, that's a spend to get it. So for them to maximize that benefit, they have to go and rent something. That's fifteen hundred dollars a month, including rent and utilities or more to get that entire payment. And a lot of times, you know, they'll provide us a lease. We have to go inspect it because we need to, again, make sure we're putting them in a safe situation. Decent, safe and sanitary. And once, once we inspected that property, they provided a lease. If it meets the, you know, the fifteen hundred, then we'll we'll uh submit a um. Uh check request claim form who will have those funds available to them and they can pay it directly to the landlord or we can pay it to the property or the tenant that's impacted. Um in addition to that rental assistance payment, they're also entitled to all the safe moving benefits and expenses that. Um impacted owner occupants are uh too. Does that make sense?
So you pay for their moving?
Yes, and the moving options is really tiny world that like, okay. Uh real quick, moving options, um commercial move. If they decide to go that route, we just ask them to get two bids for commercial movers. Typically, you have or ETA pays the lesser of the two. Um that includes everything. I mean, if they don't wanna lift a finger, they don't have to. That's that's packing, unpacking. Um it also includes sure insurance for the personal property and it's up to a fifty mile radius. So if a property owner or tenant moves beyond fifty miles. Say they move to Saint George, they'll just be on the hook for the additional travel. But they'll still be paid for the, you know, packing and unpacking. That's option one. Option two, our relocations go out and perform an interview to understand what the needs are of the displaced family. And while we're there, we take a look at the the amount of stuff, personal property that they own. Um we put together what's called a fixed payment, a scatly fixed payment. That's basically where. We determine, okay, you know, you have ten rooms of personal property to move at, you know, I think it's six hundred and fifty dollars per room. So we'll pay you, it will six hundred and fifty for the first room and then one hundred and fifty thereafter. So just ballparking it. We'll pay you three thousand dollars if you want to move your own stuff. Another option is um is just preceded move. That's where you just keep track of receipts, U-Hauls, boxes, mileage. And you just submit for reimbursement. Nobody really goes with that, as you probably guess, because the other two options. Um the the third option is brand new, like really this year. Um property owners, if they wanna get a commercial bid to move their own stuff, if they get two bids. They can opt to receive ninety percent of the low bid and just receive that payment, move their own personal property.
So with condos being rare anymore.
Yeah.
They have been built since for a long time. Um. How how often do you just take that one condo that's available and use that for?
Great question.
I mean, cause literally, how how are we gonna relocate all these people when you have so many condos?
Right. So the department has a pretty strict rule on that. They they don't want us using just one comparable if we're if we relocate, you know, fifteen people. That's not fair because that doesn't adequately uh reflect what's available on the market, right? So um we usually only use a comparable for one or two of the studies. And so we have to, you know, be creative and kind of expand our our boundaries and and look for for different things. Or we can look, you know, if property owners are okay with it, we can look at homes for them that that are that function the same. Or townhomes, things like that.
How far away are you looking at this? Because a lot of people have got a job, right? So they live in Provo for a reason.
Yeah.
You know, they're not gonna wanna live in Salt Lake Community, probably. That's not functional.
I've been doing this for sixteen years and I've never conked someone into a home that far away.
Okay.
Um we we focus on the general area. Um it's kind of, you know, really hyper focused in the area that we're impacting. And then it's, we're really restricted to what's available. So sometimes we have to broaden that ready, that search radius. But um generally, we're within, you know, a few miles. And we also during our interview to understand, you know, what the impacts are to the family and their needs. We find out, you know, if they if they rely on public transportation and we have to put them somewhere that's near public transportation or find them. So things like that.
So Brian, uh it looks like you've got a few more slides. Why don't we let you work through the rest of your slides?
Sure.
Then we'll continue with our questions.
Okay, that's what I was was asking. Okay, so um the next item we're going on to is the noise and vibration assessment. Um so as part of this half X, we went through identified all the impacts. Um so we understand who is gonna be impacted by the noise and vibration. We have not yet completed our mitigation study. So you asked about noise walls and vibration mats, it's something that we look at. We are in the middle of doing that right now. So I can show you all the impacts that we've assessed or we understand and this project is had, it will will cause. But we have not yet completed our mitigation. So those are, that is gonna be completed by the engineer. And that's when we could say, is a noise wall gonna work? Is it cost reasonable and reasonable? Meaning, does it make sense from a budget perspective and does it work to provide mitigation? Um Autumn is our NEPA lead here and she can answer any noise um questions you have and she's leading the mitigation study. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of go through these quick. Uh so you have a question. So this one right here, you can see the impacts from the double tracking. So this means a moderate impact. So it means that's something that we have to mitigate or look at mitigation for. Um this is just from the existing service, um but from having a new double track. This is the impacts from vibration. Um as you understand, trains can be heavy, especially you see that they can shake the ground. So we look at the the impacts from vibration, then we have to go look at ways to mitigate that those impacts. So noise, we typically look at noise walls, we look at replacing windows. And vibration, we typically look at vibration mats, which are items we put under the track. And it stops the 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 vibration from from going out. That's something we've used along front runner. So we also looked at the noise with the fifteen minute scenarios. You can see right here. Uh with the condos being uh removed with the double track, we'll have some noise impacts that weren't there before. So we look at, you know, how noise was before and after the project. And this will also be included our our mitigation analysis. So traffic impacts, I'm moving on to that. Some questions there.
Oh, vibration and noise, let's get through it and then I I have a.
Um you have a lot of questions about activations at at gates. Um front runner, uh we'll run more through it with the gates will activate. Um but it's typically less than a traffic uh traffic signal, just because the trains are so quick and not not near as long as Union Pacific. Uh quiet zone, we all loved it when the quiet zone went away, right? Um we're making sure that as we modify each grade crossing, that we um adhere to the zoning. Or the requirements of the quiet zone, there's a point system and we're making sure that we um maintain that that quiet zone. So next steps, we're gonna have a neighborhood meeting with impacted residents on September eighteenth. Um where I have a in-person option and a virtual option. Um. We're um working on contract negotiation with a file designer. Um we'll continue to coordinate as as we move forward with the with implementing the project. Uh we do have a project website and uh email. We do have a hotline. Um you can always reach out to your city. We coordinate with the city engineer. Um and public works director quite often, especially with Provo having a lot of utilities in the area. And we'll we'll continue to coordinate.
Thank you, Brian. We still have five or ten minutes for questions, so let's go ahead. Counselor Rabel, did you, did I see your end?
Yeah, I had some. So um just going back on the relocation.
Okay.
Options. So for the ones who are own their homes. Would they be given some sort of letter or something that they could use to help them qualify for the new mortgage?
The great question. Yes, we um we provide, we we work with that all the time. We work with our lenders, our local state agents. And we provide them our official documentation for our offer. And then we provide them with that was called a notice of eligibility. That talks about the additional funds that could be coming as part of the relocation benefits.
On the tenants with this forty two month payment, is this a lump sum payment? Or is this like a month by month thing that they get as long as they continue to qualify?
Good question. Um it kind of really depends on the amount. Sometimes they can get up to, you know, sixty, seventy thousand dollars. And the department will typically break that up into like three yearly annual payments to make sure that they're. Um you know, staying in decent, safe and sanitary housing. Uh or the department or ETA, they can decide that they want to just pay it all upfront. Um one other really cool thing that I didn't mention about rental assistance is that can actually be converted to a down payment.
That was my next question.
Yeah, so it's really neat when we make tenants homeowners as part of the process.
The next question that I had is probably not you, but in the area where you're taking out the apartments and you're going to have to do sound mitigation. Um what will, will you be doing additional landscaping or anything on the inside of that property facing? The units that will remain so that they've actually got a pleasant place there instead of just a leveled thing in a like wall?
Yeah, um agencies like DOT and UTA were horrible at doing landscaping and. Maybe you look at pre-wards and never pretty. We we don't know for sure we're doing noise walls right here, right? We need to analyze the impacts, see what's cost effective and reasonable. Uh what I anticipate is, you know, if a noise wall is warranted, we would put up a noise wall. Basically on a right away line. We're not gonna own all of this area.
Because it seems that you would be acquiring more space than you actually need when you're taking those properties. And so what happens?
Yeah, no, we typically surplus it. Um if we need, you know, needed, um I imagine we would put the right away. As we wanna follow like that, I have the condos, we would just straight line it and then allow that to slice the condo association.
So would you then be like deeding the property back over to the homeowners association?
I'd have to look into that.
Because it seems that you would also need to give some funds so that they could do, you know. Rehabilitation of that property to make it a pleasant amenity for the people who are being.
We typically don't deprop the over um without selling it. There's a first right of refusal. Um I I don't know if we have enough design really or coordination. I'd have to look into that more. But we'll have to work on more of what we're gonna do here.
Yeah, because that's it's it's a fairly common thing when UDOT has to acquire parcels, you know, for staging areas or for part of the right of way. That we end up with just kind of a gravelly pit. Eyesore afterwards.
I could just keep it and sit on it.
Yeah, yeah, and I don't want that to happen because that would be a real negative impact for the people who do continue to remain in the area.
Yeah, so what I anticipate is that we we will fence this area with with the property that is owned by UTA. We got and then uh remaining property will be owned by the association.
Chain link fence it or vinyl fence it or?
We'll see.
Still all fence it?
We'll see if a a noise wall is warranted. Um we'll also be purchasing quite a bit of um. TCEs and items from the condo association and we we will be purchasing a lot of the common area, as you can see around the units from from the association. So there will be funds um provided to the association through those through those right away transactions. Which could be used for improvements.
Any other questions for Brian or his team? Counselor Bogdan?
So how do the residents advocate for what they need or what they feel like they want, the ones that are remaining?
Uh could you clarify please?
So like if I were in one of those condos that's remaining, that's not being bought out and moved away. Unless say that I'm, like Rachel said, I'm I'm really advocating for it to look better or. Maybe it's too loud in my windows. You guys are gonna replace their windows if that's wanted, right?
Um so we look at different mitigation options. Some of those are noise walls or windows. Um typically, um we don't do full. Autumn, so correct.
And well, there's some of the comments I'm getting is you guys are city council, you guys need to advocate for us. And I'm like, yeah, that's not our, that's not our role. But um how can they advocate for themselves? So if they they feel like they need a wall. They need a twelve foot wall. How how do they advocate for that? Who's the channel that they go through? How how do they?
So typically, um we really, as you can see, we have an eighty two mile corridor throughout this this project. We uh we're using a. We have a UTA noise policy that we follow. Um we're actually looking at mitigation options for this area. There is a lot of communities where we're not even looking at mitigation options. And we get that question about can we have a wall? Can we have a privacy? Um we do not provide that um. It's really comes down to um treating everyone fairly and we. We have FTA's noise criteria, which they basically gone forth and set what what constitutes a noise impact. Or a negative noise noise impact, and that's where we have to mitigate. And that's really the purpose of our. Need our evaluation study to determine if there is a negative vibration or noise impact that needs to be mitigated.
So there's really no, there's no embudsmen, there's there's no.
Probably noise and vibration and.
Yeah.
Stuff. No, there's not. For property value, there's embudsmen. Um I've seen. Um I've seen cities do better bits sometimes for fences, but typically that's like on city streets. When I'm working with cities, cities do federal funding too, right? They deliver projects through VDOT that way. Um.
Um so are you guys going going to hold an open house for the public as well? Because there's a lot of public that aren't impacted by getting their homes purchased that are very curious about what's going on.
But we were not planning on it. We were planning on focusing uh coordination on the on the impacted residents of this moment. Um kind of thinking as we get closer to construction, we're gonna have to close some of these great crossings during construction. We're we're not gonna close, you know, both of them at the same time, but we're gonna have to phase it. Kind of kind of thinking, it's just construction so far out, people will forget, right? Wanna wait till um we're closer to to have some of that messaging to impacted.
So you guys will have some kind of an open house where you can present to the the public?
Yep.
The regular public.
Alright, specifically for these areas that are gonna be acquired, we're actually having them uh open homes. Uh next week, September eighteenth. So tomorrow, I believe the project's going to be distributing that information via uh door fingers. To the affected condos and properties. Um but that that is in the works for next week and it's scheduled to deal with. Project team to be able to sit down, present this information. And we're also gonna have breakout rooms for those who will specifically have to be relocated. That way they can meet one on one. And talk through the specific situations and ask questions.
I appreciate that, but can we also consider having some kind of meeting for just the public when it gets closer? Just to let them know, like he said, there's gonna be roads that are gonna be closed. There's gonna be a lot of impacts. A lot of people are just curious and they want questions answered and. And just like UDOT will come through when we have like Third South. You know, they'll do like a little contractor meeting where people can come and. And get conversations like that.
Yep. Uh we were thinking, as we closer to construct, we're focusing on like the more like the right away impacts right now. Um as you as you heard, it takes a year or two to really get through all the right away process. And then we would do more public outreach about construction impacts when construction starts. Um if that's not acceptable, we'd love to hear feedback, some dialogue, and we're willing to, we're willing to change our approach.
So is this meeting, she referenced, gonna be the first time that you've met with the homeowners?
Uh, we met briefly with the HOA. Um, but yes, this will be the first time.
Why did it take like why? There seemed to be a long time of neighborhood rumors or worried about it that they didn't get any communication from the guys.
Yeah, um. I'll I'll admit that the rollout was not the way we want to do it and we would change the way we did it if we do.
Where will this meeting be held? Is it, will it be here? On the eighteenth? Yes.
Vern Keesler, Provo City's Transportation Manager. Um, we've been working with UDOT, UTA. And the consulting team for more than a year now. There are some impacts to Provo City infrastructure such as water, sewer and storm drains. We've been working with them and their team to look at relocation of that infrastructure. So we've also held diagnostic reviews at Highway Grand Bridge Crossings and five hundred, seven hundred and ninety hundred West. And so those um, meetings have already been held in advance of where they're currently at.
Helpful to know. Thank you, Vern.
Always the safety of the railroad crossing.
Well, thank you, Brian, and thank you, team members, for your participation today and your presentation. Very helpful.
Yeah, thank you for the.
We will take a five minute break now, so if any have any options, you can certainly. Reach out to our presenters. Thank you. Thanks, Gary. Thank you, Kevin. We'll now continue our. Council session. Our next presentation. Is regarding conservation easements. And the presentation will be given, will be delivered to us by Wendy Fisher, who is the Executive Director of Utah Open Lands. Welcome, Wendy. We're glad you could be here today.
Well, thank you. I am glad that I could be here as well. I appreciate coming here. I will save my. Secret how I know all about Provo and Utah County for my second slide. Um, but my first slide, I'm Wendy Fisher, as was mentioned. I'm the Executive Director of Utah Open Lands. Um, Utah Open Lands is the oldest local land trust here in the state of Utah. Um, we started back in nineteen ninety. Um, and we hold over sixty-four thousand conservation easements. That's land that is protected as open space. I think one of the things that is really intriguing about just open space in general. That really we saw come to um, a a head, so to speak, during the pandemic. Was that while other communities saw their economic uh, outlook kind of. Trend downward during twenty twenty. Utah actually saw its economy grow by three percent. And part of the reason for that, that was detailed, everything from the governor's office to um. The convention and visitor bureaus is that we found that you could be six feet apart if you were outside on a trail. You could actually gain some mental um. Solace, being out with friends and family because you could be out on the trail. Um, we have seen in a number of instances, just here in the state of Utah. How open space at the end of the day actually helps sustain the quality of life that we all enjoy. And I always like to say that Utah Open Lands is an organization that sees our job as a balance. We are a balance to some of the development that takes place, but a balance that is in harmony. To ensure the protection of the quality of life in our communities. Um, a lot of times Utah Open Lands will work with private landowners who want to exercise their private property right to preserve their land. As a property owner, property owners have a lot of different rights. And preserving their land is a right that they can exercise by working with Utah Open Lands and doing conservation easement. But we also have worked with a lot of uh, government agencies and other agencies. Um, on the protection of open spaces that they feel are critical. To their community. Um, you'll see on the slide a number of different. Uh, conservation easements that are held on all of these that you see up there are public lands. And in those instances, the grantors are various different state and local agencies.
Counselor Kay?
Yes.
I'm curious how that works. Like, I've got the email that was gonna do some. Fixing up down there as far as trails.
Can you turn on your microphone, Catrice?
Sorry, Craig.
I want to hear every word.
But I'm excited about, I love Bridaliff Falls, and I'm so glad that that got protected. But um, so. With them doing that work, is that something the US approved? Is that something you're doing the work or how does that work then?
Such a great question. Um, and I appreciate it because the answer isn't just a yes or no. The answer is really comes down to how you put the conservation easement together. So, for example, when we did Bridaliff Falls, one of the concerns that had occurred and the reason that Utah Open Lands was actually contacted. By Utah County and by other residents. Um, was because there was a concern that that land was gonna be sold off for private development. Um, that would actually have required that people who wanted to visit Bridaliff Falls would have had to pay a fee. And so part of what really took place there, that is not unlike the conservation easements that we do with so many different agencies. Is really to codify intent of the council or the commission or that agency for that particular land. So to answer your specific question, most of the things that are being done on Bridaliff Falls was a known. Element when we did the conservation easement. I'm gonna talk in a minute about how we worked with Park City on a management plan that involves set twelve stakeholders. Of community members, other agencies and whatnot. I'll get to that in a second. But really what it comes down to, and I just want to make sure that I am thoroughly answering your question because it is one that. Can depend on what the conservation easement is. In some instances, we've had government entities to say, well, actually, if. A particular use is going to come up on this particular property. We want to make sure that the public, that it gets vetted in the public. And so we don't want to have you let us. Do that unless we go through a public vetting. With respect to a master plan. Or a management plan for a piece of property. That is actually something that we can have that's codified in the conservation easement. And no, you're not coming to Utah Open Lands to ask us for a approval, but you may come to us and ask us. If we're helping, if we would be willing to help support funding it. So we actually got a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to help do some improvements for Bridaliff Falls. Some of the other agencies, and you've already mentioned Utah County. Um, but some of the other uh, government entities that we have looked uh, that we have worked our uh, with are on the screen here. Um, and this is actually the signing of one of the first conservation easements on a government uh, held piece of property. In Snake Creek Canyon, which is part now of Wasatch Mountain State Park. But this was uh, state parks granting a conservation easement to Utah Open Lands on a thousand acres that is part of. The twenty-two thousand acre Wasatch Mountain State Park. Um, and it allowed for a lot of uses that were historic uses and actually codified some of those uses. But wouldn't let it go beyond. So for example, snowmobiling was something that had been taking place in this particular area. What it didn't allow for is a huge condo and ski resort development on Wasatch Mountain State Park. So the conservation easement codified that. They said, um, local land trust. I know what does the horse have to do with it? I actually grew up in Utah County. Um, and I used to, with permission. Ride my horse through all the orchards. And one of the reasons that I do this work today is because my horse outlived the orchards. That I used to love when I was growing up in Utah County. So I have a fondness for Provo, for Orem, for all of these places. Because this was my stomping grounds. And I can say that I feel like being able to be out in nature, being able to ride my horse. Um, when I was thirteen years old, through all of these amazing places, really uh, was part. Of helping me grow up as a kid. And I look at to the next generation and I worry if we don't have these places, where will they go? Um, we have a number of awards that we've received from various different entities like Utah State University. Um, the uh, American Landscape Award was actually a project that we worked on on Whedon Farmland Park. Um, with Salt Lake County. Um, and it really is an amazing piece of property to go and see what we were able to do. Again, codified through the terms of the conservation easement. We are also a nationally accredited organization. Um, with the Land Trust Alliance, which is a national organization that requires us to perform. Um, our job in certain ways to make sure that we uphold the values of the conservation easement. So now we're kind of gonna come to the crux of. the values of the conservation easement. So now we're kind of going to come to the crux of conservation easement and kind of what we started with talking about it. A conservation easement is defined as an encumbrance. You can read the definition there. But I think a lot of times, people don't really understand that these conservation easements, as much as I'm going to in a moment run through the various different components of a conservation easement, they're all tailor-made. You can't just take one conservation easement and place it on another property because that land is going to be different. What the landowner wants to make sure can happen on that land in the future is going to be different. So each one of these conservation easements takes time to work through. And to the extent that there is a vision that has already been put in place by the landowner, all of that can be codified through a conservation easement. And that's where we come into some of these other elements where we work with governmental entities in terms of partnering in management strategies. We partner in protection priorities. Maybe there's watershed values on a portion of the property. We guard against future decisions that might be rash decisions. And we've seen that in a number of instances where we have relied on the conservation easement and the intention in the conservation easement to ensure that it does and upholds what the community wants it to uphold. It also guards against private benefit to ensure the public benefit. And there are actually a number of cases in the state of Utah where private benefit has been conferred through public lands. And that's one of the reasons that a conservation easement is helpful in terms of guarding against that and ensuring the public benefit. And as I said, can't say it enough, it really does work with the intention of that landowner. So as a council, what you would like to see happen. As I said, there are sort of elements of a conservation easement. I've put them up here because I think that it is valuable to understand when you see the conservation easement and it's drafted, these all have a specific purpose, right? So the rights of the grantee allow us to basically enforce the terms of the conservation easement. And these are typically enforcements against what we would call third-party violations. In fact, we had a third-party violation on a property up in Wasatch County that is owned by a public entity. And the third-party violation was basically to clear half an acre of the property with absolutely no permission, completely took the soil, everything else. We worked and settled with the entity that was responsible for $250,000 that went into ongoing management and stewardship for this particular piece of property. Not only did the entity that had violated the easement have to come and restore all of that, but it was Utah Open Lands that put together the restoration plan, because we have people on staff that know how to do that, in partnership with the public entity staff. And then we actually went out and got volunteers to do the work. And I should have brought the side-by-side comparisons, because you would be blown away how after over just a few years, you wouldn't know that that property had been violated. But I think it would have been a tough road had we not been there. We do feel like we served a purpose. But that's part of the rights of the grantee as part of the conservation easement component.
Wendy question over here from Counselor McCain.
It's something that made me wonder. So if you have staff and all these things, is there then a type of managed fee or an ongoing fee that we pay you to keep something in a conservation easement?
No, actually, I mean, you can if you want to. Let me, let me say that. Certainly, we value the work that we do as an organization. We feel that as a nonprofit organization, what we do is a high level of quality. I have with me today the individual in our office who does the baseline documentations. He does an excellent job. We have all sorts of technology from drones to even being able to go out and make sure that we're walking the right lines.
So where's your funding come from?
So, as a nonprofit organization, our mission is fully, as I have here, under 170H of the IRS code. So we are not just a 501(c)(3) organization. We are also under an established part of the tax code. So our whole mission is to protect these lands. So we have donors who don't own land that want to see this mission forwarded. We have community members who want to see treasured landscapes in their community protected, who make regular donations. We have foundations that will say, hey, can you make sure that you work with all of these different entities to ensure that the future open space for next generations agricultural lands is secured? We're going to give you some money. So what we see is that basically the conservation easement is pretty much our mission. We don't do political advocacy. And I don't consider what I'm doing here today to be political advocacy, but some nonprofits do. Our mission is solely dedicated to protecting land that has certain conservation values that are enumerated under the Utah Code and under the specific 501(c)(3)(170H) IRS Code.
Do you ever, do you get money from federal or state, like how we do the McAllister Fund and that kind of thing?
Yes. But those all have different funding sources that, or stipulations that are attached to them. So, for example, we've probably gotten $15 million from federal funding specifically to protect agricultural lands. Those are specific to agricultural lands. We have received funding from the Lee Ray McAllister Fund. In fact, our, one of our projects was one of their very first projects funded by the Lee Ray McAllister Fund. But we have also, and I think this is more along the lines of what the city might be interested in, we also, when we were working on Bonanza Flat, and I'm just going to forward through that and maybe come back. When we were working on Bonanza Flat with Park City, we actually got, have now all told, got, put out grants to private foundations, the Utah Office of Outdoor Recreation Grants and others, over $500,000 has been brought in to create trailheads, to create trails, to do restoration. In fact, we just got in a completely privately-funded restoration of their, they had a kind of a programming deck that had fallen apart because of snow and everything. We, we put together probably 75% of the money on our own for that management. So yes, we get funded by a lot of different sources, and it is specific to what that source wants to see.
Hey, I mountain biked that a couple of weeks ago. It's awesome.
Thank you. Thank, we, we have to give a nod to our partners, not only Park City, but Mountain Trails Foundation.
Beautiful.
It really is an outstanding trail. Yes.
Counselor Bogdan.
These contracts are forever, right?
They are.
So what happens if the funding dries up?
For us as an organization?
What happens to the property if the funding dries up?
Well, so there are a couple of different things. First and foremost, within the conservation easement, there is a transferee clause. And the conservation easement can be transferred. It could even be transferred to another state entity. But there are other land trust organizations that it can be transferred to. The other element to it is actually, we have the highest, I would say, standard of excellence in terms of what we call our stewardship fund. So we have a stewardship endowment fund that has been privately funded that we don't touch the principal for. And the interest is what we use to ensure the monitoring of these conservation easements and the legal defense of these conservation easements. We also carry conservation easement defense insurance through a national group called Terra Firma. So I think your conversation, your question is a legitimate question. And certainly 35 years ago, when I was very young and just starting this organization, I didn't have a really great answer to that question. Because what does happen if the money dries up? You know, what?
35 years isn't very long.
And 35 years isn't very long.
Especially when you're thinking of eternity.
Exactly, exactly.
And we, we think of economic changes, and things are different now than they were in the 1920s.
They sure are. They sure.
Finances are different, the way things work are different. I mean, we could go through a Great Depression and your endowment fund could dry up.
Right, right. Hopefully, none of that will happen, because if that happens, we're all in a world of...
Forever.
We're, we're all in a world of hurt. But...
But you still own it, right?
But yes, technically, you guys still own it. And I think the other element to it is you have basically put together in the conservation easement, a roadmap, a trail map, a, a, basically a vision for the intention of its forever protection. So even if something were to happen to us, actually, you have the ability to make sure that those intentions are carried forward because you've actually spent the time to create that intention and to codify it in a document. So we try to bootstrap it. I can't, I can't make promises that I don't know, because I'm not clairvoyant into the future. But we have thought about this a lot. We've tried to do as much as possible. And we do think that the document speaks for itself and that there are other elements that actually can defend it. Could start going through some various different court cases, but that is no fun for anybody. So they'd actually, we've seen judges support conservation easements across the nation.
Counselor McCain.
But technically, we still own it, even if you disappear.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yep.
Another question. We have, we've seen in different states, the state taking eminent domain and kind of preempting cities zoning ability, right? Is there a risk at all that a conservation easement can be superseded by a state saying, oh, we need to go put 1,000 townhomes there?
I'd love that question. It is a question that actually a lot of communities are asking because it is happening, even here in the state of Utah. I will say this, anything is possible.
So the state can't run it?
Obviously, conservation easements are not safe from condemnation. However, we have fought five condemnation cases, and we have won. So we are obligated to defend it. And that's part of what our conservation easement defense is for.
So you say it's happened in Utah. Where in Utah has that been tried?
Well, you just had you dot here.
Yeah. Well, I thought that was a conservation.
Yeah, so not, not, not what they presented.
Oh, I got you.
But we...
Of course.
So, yeah, I mean, we had an issue with Vangarder Highway going through the Gene and Dean Whedon Farm. That did not happen.
The Delta, did the Delta take some of that? I've heard the Delta did take some of those conservation easements.
The Delta?
The Provo River Delta project.
So that's not something that Utah Open Lands has been involved in. So it would be remiss for me to speak to that because I don't, I've not been involved in that. And I don't know that every organization looks at it the same way. I do know that we have defended our conservation easements. And here's the thing, because I think this is really important to say. I, Utah Open Lands isn't against good planning. Okay, but what we have seen, and we have lots of folks that have on various different councils, is that sometimes we try to solve poor planning on the backs of open space. Sometimes we try to solve for poor planning on the backs of other landscapes, even neighborhoods. And what the conservation easement allows us to do is to ask the tough questions and require that before we make a poor planning mistake, that the stakes are high. So we have, we fought a gas line going through a conservation easement. And it was determined that actually it was going to be cheaper for the gas line to go the other route. Maybe not as happy for some people, but it was going to be cheaper and it was going to be a better route. So we see this as providing, again, a question, a moment, a pause, as we are making these decisions to reflect back on the intention and the vision for this particular community treasure. Say, do we really want to mess with that? Maybe at some point, the answer will be yes. So far, it hasn't happened. So we're feeling good about that for the moment. But you guys asked tough questions, so. There, you can put, so there's a permitted uses, prohibited uses. Again, you own the land, you get to help make those decisions. They can, they are informed decisions because we have an inventory of the resources from recreational values to, oh, just sheer open space values, to wildlife habitat. We can work, you can have a management plan provision, as I talked about a little bit with Park City. And you can, there are limitations on amendments. Coming back to a little bit, we don't, we're not clairvoyant. We don't have that crystal ball. But we can find a way in the future to make the best decision for the land. And that's really what this is about. If this is not the best decision for the land to ensure it in perpetuity and to have that intention to protect these places for the community, then that's something to have a conversation about. This is, for example, just some language pulled out of the baseline documentation as part of the conservation easement. Really exciting language. I would read it to you, but we would all fall asleep. But this is not, is done in a vacuum. Utah Open Lands doesn't say, oh, here's what we think the property is about. This all gets vetted by you guys. We do field trips. We bring in all of the information because we want you to know what is on the property right now. Maybe there are some existing encroachments that need to be taken care of, those sorts of things. We want to take a snapshot of that property in that particular time. And again, Wood Robinson is our resource land technician who does our baseline documentations. And he will collaborate with the city staff in going through, putting together the baseline documentation. Here's an excerpt from his baseline documentation. So you can see it's a combination of maps, narratives. If you want to get into specific details, we codify even what the different conservation values are. And then we also talk about the intended uses in more of a layman's terms, as opposed to some of the legalities that go through the conservation easement. Again, just kind of giving you a reference point, the reason I think that I've been bringing Bonanza Flat is mainly because there were different zones. So some of the property was critical watershed. Actually, it flows down and feeds all of us here on the Wasatch Front. Some of the headwaters for the water that we drink in the Wasatch Front come from Bonanza Flat. So it was very important for some of the partners that participated in wanting to see this land protected, and including Park City, to have a designation where the headwaters area was something that would have less impacts. Then we had a backcountry zone. And that was something where people could have more of an experience like Commissioner Handley had out on the Bonanza Loop Trail. So having that backcountry mountain biking experience. And then the front country actually even allows for interpretive trails. And we actually just did the first accessible trail coming into the front country, going to our Aspen programming deck that we fully funded through Utah Open Lands on this project, obviously at, at the behest of the landowner of Park City. So I'm, don't know, looking at my time here, my overtime.
We're, we're good for maybe another five minutes.
Okay, sorry about that. I was supposed to leave time for questions, but let's say we had a few, so we'll get a couple. And so our role as a land trust is really to be this ongoing partner and have the relationship with the land and the landowner. We obviously enforce the terms of the conservation easement. But oftentimes, what we find, especially with the government agencies that we work with, is that really it's a partnership. And it is, how do we help the vision that you have for this community treasure come to fruition? And we'll do our darnedest to find grants and other things to do it. But we think just the visioning process and putting the conservation easement together in and of itself is a, a huge value as you move forward in really the community quality of life that you want to sustain. So now we're at questions, and I have like four minutes.
Questions for Wendy? This, this was great, Wendy. Very helpful framework for our next item. How long have you been involved with Utah Open Lands?
35 years.
Wow.
Since I started.
Yes.
Good question, Gary.
I, I was, yeah, I can't take full credit for it, but yes, I was one of the founders. But I'm only 12, so I'm going to be here for another 35 years.
Counselor Christensen, who's joining us remotely, has a question. Go ahead, Craig.
So Wendy, thank you for coming. It's very helpful. One of my questions is, could you answer, why does it make sense to get your help with this? Why can't this city just do it? This is actually city-owned land. What's the benefit of having an agency like yours be involved in this?
So, you know, a great question. I think that that also is similar to some of the questions we had earlier from the perspective that this is what Utah Open Lands does. This is our mission. We have the experience that we can bring to the table from working with over 20 different agencies and government entities. We have 64,000 acres of different lands that we've protected. We have done management plans for private landowners. We've done management plans for government entities. We have, again, enforced these conservation easements. And I think we have two cases I can't talk about right now, where I could tell you if you did call the government agencies that we're working with, they're very glad that Utah Open Lands is involved in the conservation easement because we are another entity to support the protection of the land and the resource against a third-party violator. And again, we have set a really good precedent of obtaining significant amount of cures for these violations. We have a conservation easement on Utah, on the University of Utah property. And a third party came, a private homeowner came and took an acre of their ground and did lots of interesting things to it. And the cure to that was they had to return it to its original state, and they also had to provide an... And they also had to provide an additional amount of acres at a five-to-one ratio. And they had to put money into stewardship. We didn't even have to go to court. We were able to negotiate that from a settlement perspective because we were able to demonstrate what had taken place on the property before, the value of the conservation values that had been disrupted, and then finally, the importance of making it right. And I think that, um, from what I remember in those conversations, they were very glad that Utah Open Lands was a partner to be that support and to hold people's feet to the fire. So I think there are a lot of different reasons, from expertise to this is what we do, um, to, yes, you can go it alone. But thank goodness, you don't have to.
Thank you, Wendy.
Counselor McKay.
Uh, my only concern and what I want, I guess, to do, so we can put provisions in there, is that if they do any infrastructure, that we can do infrastructure as far as water stuff. And I don't know, like, um, I don't know if there'd be need to do recreational stuff down the road. I don't know, but like, I don't want there to be things down the road, like Becky says, things change and needs change, and I don't know if we'll be doing like flying frisbees on like things that fly in the air. We need like charging stations for them. I don't know. But like, there could be something in the future that we need something recreational that we're going to think of right now, or I don't know.
So a couple of things, and again, this is perfect. You're doing your job in terms of thinking through these things, because we don't know. But there are a lot of ways that we can build into the conservation easement those uncertainties. And then, if it's a no-brainer, we'll have those provisions in there. If it's something that maybe the community should weigh in on, we'll have those provisions in there. We did that with Utah County on Bridalow Falls. There is a portion where the community would have to weigh in if a certain infrastructure were to take place. So you're thinking in the right direction, I guess I would say. And we are here to help you make a document that can be flexible into the future. Because we're not protecting a museum piece. We are protecting a living, breathing piece of property. But I think there are things that the community would like to make sure can never happen on this property.
But that's what guarantee.
Those are the things that you want to have a discussion about and say, no, we are going to draw a line in the sand. And what we have seen is that those carefully determined lines in the sand have always come back to benefit the community. They've always come back to actually provide some of the, the basis for long-term economic vitality.
Mine's more of a statement. I, I'm not for this, just because it is government-owned land. And the government, I mean, we've been here for Provo City. How old are we, Michelle? Right, we've been along, we've been around for a really long time, and we purchased the land for a reason. And, you know, one of those is, is watershed. And we really don't know what the future entails and what the future entails with water. I mean, we have this ASR project that we've had to fight tooth and nail to get in. And I really am not interested in being a partner with somebody else if we're doing what's best for the residents on our property that we own. I have a hard time with that. I even brought up the news park and the issues that we had when we partnered with the government for that water conservation and trying to sell that to the, the school district. And just when we have partnerships with others, it's just been very difficult to do the things that we need to do. And so I, for that reason, I'm, I'm not for this at all.
And I realize it's a long time. It forever is a long time. And, and I realize that yours was a statement and, and not a question, and I want to respect that. I think the other thing that I would say is, one, we have always worked very carefully as an organization to do the work upfront, to make sure that we are looking at what are the goes, what are the no-gos. And when I look at what happened to the watershed for Salt Lake back in twenty eighteen, when they almost lost their ability to protect their watershed. That was something that, again, it would have been helped if there had been able to have a voice for those quintessential values we rely on from health, welfare, and safety si- situation. And so hopefully, not that I'm going to change your mind, though I want to. But hopefully, that's one of the things that will be foremost in people's minds is how do we create flexibility? How do we re- maintain our authority and autonomy as Provo City? But how do we say no in a very strong way to things that we know would damage that watershed? That we know down the road would be the wrong thing for the future generations. That's hopefully the balance you can get to, but I do respect where you're coming from, for sure.
Wendy, thank you again for your presentation and your help in laying the foundation for our next presentation. It was great having you here and those who've come with you. Thank you. We'll now move to our next item, which is regarding a conservation easement in Bunels Fork. This will be presented to us by Malia, one of our call, policy analysts.
Great, and I'll go super quick as fast as you want to. First, I'm not sure whether to call it Bunels Fork or Bunels Canyon, and I have searched the county records and even like historical records at the library, and they use it interchangeably, and Bunels is spelled multiple ways, so this is what I'm calling it. If someone else wants to call it something else, that's fine.
We don't, can we just say this is what it's called?
Bunels Fork, that's what I'm going to refer to it as. Um, yeah, thank you, Wendy, for the good context there. And now we'll kind of go into, ask for why Wendy was here today. And this really started as an issue request. Well, I'll just go to my next slide. This started as an issue request from two counselors, Hanley and Christensen, who wanted to look into a conservation easement on some or all of the parcels that the city owns in Bunels Fork slash Canyon. And so, um, and then places into conservation easement, and what would that entail? Um, they're not within city boundaries, they're just city-owned. So legally, under Utah State Code, what does that mean? Under our own code, is there any provisions there? Um, does this have anything to do with the county? We did a lot of investigation, and by we, I mean mostly Brian, looking into different scenarios and routes for us to do that. And we've been working a lot with the administration as well. They've been amazing and very helpful. Um, looking at initial, uh, appraisals of the land and how much that would cost and what are our resources up there that we want to protect or considerations that we have. So it's kind of context, and after, uh, some investigation and research, we've discovered it is possible for the city to per, um, for a pathway for us to do this, that is, as Catrice questioned to Wendy, no cost to us either upfront or ongoing. Um, it is a provision of Utah State Code for us to be able to provide non-monetary assistance to qualifying nonprofits um, without receiving fair market value compensation, as long as it promotes their mission and helps them in their mission and is a public benefit to the city and to the community and to everyone else. So going through that, Utah Open Lands, um, and I'll let the administration speak to this more. Utah Open Lands would be the nonprofit that would then hold that easement for you to go through this process. Um, we've discussed in our kind of initial meetings before coming to the council, the why behind this. In the supporting materials, you'll see I include that amendment that the council passed to the hillsides and canyons plan. I believe we passed that last year. Um, Appendix D, which is the letter that specifically calls out city-owned lands that aren't within city boundaries, but are within our hills and canyons and things. We want to protect our water resources there. We want to protect recreational opportunities and open space. So that's something that, um, as a council, we just passed, so I included that there. But there's also general plan and conservation and resiliency plan goals that also this conservation easement could help further the council and administration's sees to go forward with it. Um, there is support from the mayor of the administration, and then obviously the two counselors whose issue request it is. And today's purpose of this discussion, I'll turn the time over to the administration here after this, is just to see, um, as far as this process goes, if there's a motion for general support from the council, the majority, to say continue on this process. And then we'll come back and we'll figure out all of the fine details that Wendy discussed as far as a conservation easement, what that looks like, public hearing process, and public valuation studies. That will all happen once we get kind of majority support from everyone, not everyone, from the majority, from the council, I mean, and then we can kind of go forward. So that's the purpose of today's discussion. Um, I want to turn it over to the administration. I don't know who wants to speak, just kind of to their, um, side on this.
So I'll speak first, and then Scott can speak about the logistics of how this is moving forward. This has been brought to our attention for years and years. Um, we have, I've gone up there three times, I've hiked it. I, we have our substation there, our water resource there, our fresh springs that are just invaluable and need to be protected. If you go and hike it, you'll come around. I think George has done it a couple of times. You come around and you immediately hit a thirty percent, more than a thirty percent slope, which is completely non-buildable. It's, it's cliffs, it's sheer, it's, it's beautiful. We've had bear sightings. It's, it's, it's magical. It isn't a, it is a magical little piece of property that with our freshwater springs right there, this one makes sense, and I'm in full support of this. And Scott will work through the logistics. And again, we've been working on this for a lot of years. And some people have come kicking and screaming. I'm not going to lie. Is, this is not, this is hard for certain people to wrap their arms around and see the reasoning behind it. This one makes sense. It makes sense to me. And so Scott took the logistics side of it, and he's going to talk about how we landed with, um, who will be the lead on this and, and things like that. But this is, again, I think this, I know this will be a huge win for the city at the end of day.
Mayor, how big is the parcel?
How big is it, Tara? Do you remember?
Well, there's a couple parcels up there. We originally had, what, I think twelve or thirty acres appraised. But that's something we could figure out as part of the easement, because there are a bunch of different parcels, kind of like puzzle piece together. So that's something, as far as details, we could figure out in that process.
What substation is there, Mayor?
It's our freshwater. We have some springs right there. And so we need access to those anyways, and that is in perpetuity, right? Our truck needs to get up there. It's fenced in and it's controlled and protected. And there's a lot of, um, there's been a lot. George and I have been in some fun meetings with folks that own property up there, and you're using our property line, and no, we're not, and yes, we are. I mean, it's just citizens that own properties up there engaged, and we appreciate that. But at the end of day, this is the right thing to do. And Scott, why don't you talk about, we've had a lot of meetings about how we're going to move forward with this, and I feel like we've landed in a good place.
Yeah, I think the, the property's placement outside of the city limits um, was a critical factor, even though it has critical, um, utility infrastructure, that we want this area as protected as any other group does, Provo. So, um, do you want to point, I, I don't feel like Bunels Fork is in, under any immediate threat because we obviously have that protection. It's a valuable resource for the city and for its operation, for its beauty and for what it provides to us. Malia has actually been a champion on this and has really taken and mapped out the process. Another big member of our team is our property manager, Tara Riddle, will be, um, taking the point for the administration to work through this process. Malia has this mapped out all the way through to a finish line, and everything goes like Malia says it will. So that issue, but I get, but I promised both Malia and Tara that I would assist in clearing the path if this is the direction we decide to go on it. Gordon has already been involved in some of the verbiage for the conservation easement, working on that. Doug Robbins will also be involved with other parts, and will make sure all departments are able to comment on some of the characteristics that would be part of the conservation easement that protects Provo City's interests in this also and its possible use for its citizens. So I feel like Malia's done a greater part of the work on the plan, and so ours is to support it, and we'll get through the fastest desire, you know.
And just another huge success story that is another easement in Provo that is, has just been just a gem for us is Rock Canyon. When that one came up and same type issue, it was going to go to, uh, gravel pit. Uh, I, I mean, I wasn't official on the board, but I spoke out. We did fundraising, I knocked doors. And there is absolutely zero regret on protecting that beautiful rock canyon. It is a gem for the whole community. So similar to this, but this is not, I'd like to know ten people that have hiked it in the past six months, because it's not an easy hike. Kay, put your hand down. You're going to make us look all bad.
Well, in some ways, sorry if I could just add to that. In some ways, it's like, uh, um, it's going to be a special surprise to a lot of the citizens. I mean, we know from the survey that we did several years ago that was the scientifically reliable survey on all things related to the city that preservation of canyons and open land and trails was very high on Provo citizens' priorities. We know, as Wendy said, that that's one of the main drivers why people want to live here. It's a driver of our economy. And even though that canyon isn't as well-known as Rock Canyon, and for obvious reasons, it's not as visible from where we're all uh, living right now, but I think when people become aware of it more, uh, it's going to become as valued and important as Big Springs is. And Big Springs, uh, you would remember this, I, better than I do, but it seemed to me in that survey, Big, Big Springs is way up there. Like, people think, most people can't believe that's a city park, you know, that that's actually a city property. It's an extraordinary asset.
Yeah, it's our, one of our largest used parks, and it's not, um, in the city limits, so it is, is a unique feature.
Thought it was owned by.
Big Spring, we have it, it's called Fort Garth.
And this is, this is just as beautiful. It's, it's a little wilder, steeper. Um, but it is really extraordinary, so.
For comparison, Mayor, do you remember how big the Rock Canyon easement is?
I think that's seventeen acres, the Lipti portion, right?
But we did patchwork, if you remember, George, because there was national forest land, and then county, and then us. And that one, we really thought through when we went after that one, to make it, to patchwork the pieces, to protect it.
And then the city had to buy that, right?
Um, that's, sorry, you guys, um, a portion.
Yeah, because that was.
And we had a donation as well.
Privately owned, and the Lipti family sold it to the city, but half of it was paid for by publicly raised funds, and the other half was from the city, right? It was like a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and then the Lipti family was willing to give up a lot.
Yeah, they sold it, but pretty.
Is that part of Utah Open Lands also?
No, the, the easement is, uh, shared with, um, Rock Canyon Preservation Alliance.
I see, that's right, okay.
Okay, so like I said, today, we're just seeking a council motion for majority support generally for this process and the idea of this. There will definitely be steps at which council members can, as much as they want to get involved, but there will also be regular check-ins that we will have with the council as a whole. These are kind of the immediate next steps, which is a memorandum of understanding, an MOU, between Provo City and Utah Open Lands. It just kind of say, we want to partner with you. There'll be no monetary cost to the city now, or kind of ongoing, as we discussed. And then drafting the actual easement. That's something I'm probably not going to be a part of, as I don't know anything about that. But that is where administration, legal, public works, Parks and Rec, Development Services, and Utah Open Lands, obviously, will all make sure that those, um, considerations, as Wendy discussed, are as part of there. And that can be something too, that we kind of have like a final draft or something that we can send out to the council to review as well. This is one part, um, as part of this Utah Code ten-eight, the rest of the numbers. Um, this process that we're going through, we do need to have a public interest valuation study. This is done internally by council administrative staff, and so um, our office will be taking lead on writing that, but we'll be partnering. I've already spoke with Hannah Sosel, our sustainability coordinator, on, um, having her kind of help us draft this. And this is just a evaluation study of the importance of the easement, and this is something we can also work with Utah Open Lands on. And that's something that we can get public input on as well, on their inputs on why. And that's something that we can get public input on as well, on their inputs on why it's important to Provo City residents. And then this final step is just for the city council. As part of this process outlawed in state code for the city, the council to authorize the city to place the property into an easement. And that will be a Class A notice public hearing, so it will have. The highest level of public hearing notices that we send out to everyone and obviously we'll also advertise that. And that will be um during a council night meeting and it will be an official vote that the council passes a resolution. So immediate next steps though today is a motion for majority support for this process. Um, and then just kind of if that, if there is. Then the next thing, um, we'll also be working to kind of plan a public open house just on education and. Bunnels, I call it Bunnels Canyon here, Bunnels Canyon history and I kind of answer questions from the public. But so now it's time for discussion, questions and any motions that the council would like to make.
So Malia, the public open house is just for education and information, it's not a requirement, there'd be a public.
No, it's not a requirement, it is something we talked about in our meetings with administrative staff. Um, it's just, it would be good to have, like George said, to talk about why the city is doing this, the importance. Of open space and general plan goals and just kind of get the word out about it. So that's just kind of an aside thing that we're taking on, but it's not part of the official requirements of the state code process.
Then could you go back a slide?
Of course.
If um the city owns the land, what, and maybe this is to Brian, what box is checked by the valuation study?
So what the state code requires in this particular instance. We are considering that giving the conservation easement to a nonprofit, in this case, uh, Utah Open Lands. Uh, constitutes non-monetary assistance to them in furthering their mission. In order to do that without receiving compensation for it, since you're essentially giving away a. Property interest that you hold and trust for the taxpayers. You must hold a public hearing and find that giving it away is in the public interest. So the valuation study is the study that attempts to show one way or the other. Uh, right, I mean theoretically, it's a, it's a study that is going to study the pros and cons, doesn't have a predetermined outcome. But that study evaluates the potential public interest. Then you will hold a public hearing, hear from the public. And make a final determination about whether giving the property interest away is in the public interest or not.
Okay.
It's a process that's done, we spoke with Bernie at Sully City and they have done it, she sent me several examples. So it's a section of state code that has been, that's used for this process.
Great, thank you.
Brian, just to be clear, um, we're not talking about, we're not giving away ownership interest. It's the, it's the development capability of that, for instance, commercial development wo- wouldn't. Wouldn't be permitted under that uh that use, but anything that the city needs. Uh, to use as recreation, to to keep it in pristine condition, to protect the the uh. Again, a key source of our water, we're not giving those things away. All we're doing is we are, we're, I don't know the legal uh term, but. It's not, we're not transferring ownership. We're actually um giving up the right to develop that in a commercial way that would be inconsistent with what the city wants.
Ye- yes and no, I mean, I I ninety nine, I ninety percent agree with you, Council Christians, I mean, you're right, I mean. You think of property ownership as ownership of a bundle of rights, right? And what we are doing is we are actually transferring ownership of some of those rights to someone else. So we use the term property interest, we are transferring a pro- uh, we are, it is proposed that we transfer a property interest. We are not tran- but to your point, and I I may be kind of overthinking it and where you're trying to simplify it. To your point, we are not transferring fee title to the underlying property. We, we do need to be careful in this. Everyone's anticipation is that we will do this and I feel full confidence in the process, but. We only retain- retain rights to do some of those things you listed. If the easement says we retain rights to do those things, so that's part of the. The care that we need to take in drafting easement that we explicitly state the rights that we want to keep.
And and what makes you think that we wouldn't take ultimate care in doing that properly? I mean, if we're gonna go through this process, it it is to take care in making sure that that's done what, right?
Right, sorry, I didn't hear the very first part of your question. I agree with your second statement, but I didn't hear what the question was.
Well, I was just saying, and we would, we would obviously take care, I mean, that's why we're doing this. Place is to make sure that that watershed is protected. That we maintain ownership of that watershed, use of that, that we can get to city property, that we can maintain it, that we can put trails on it. Whatever the city wants to do, we can do. So we're not, I I think there's a, there's a fear of. We're, we're going to lose this. Actually, we're going to keep all of this, that's wonderful about Bunnels Fork. That's the purpose of the conservation easement.
Yeah, and that's why we, and that's why I said I have full confidence in the process that that's the intent and that's what we're gonna do, that. Uh, I don't know if you have the slides in front of you, but the slide that's up right now down at the bottom, that's why it says. Administration, Legal, Public Works, Parks and Rec, Development Services, all of the city, uh, all of the elements of the city. That need to have input on what the rights are that we need to keep are gonna be involved in the process to make sure that that happens.
Thanks, Brian.
So, so Scott, the property would stay under the management of Parks and Rec?
Yes, under Provo City and a combination, uh, because multiple departments have an interest in it, so it is also with our Public Works Department also.
So it's all on thirty percent slope, so it wouldn't be buildable, right?
Not all of it.
Yeah, not all of it, but a a large portion has those type of elements, so.
I don't. It's not, but it's not subject to our critical hillside overlay zone because it's not in city boundaries.
Right, and I, I have not made a personal development assessment of it, I just know of its importance to our watershed. And to our recreation and it out being outside of the city limits, so therefore I've never really looked at it as a. Development possibility.
Right, and I'm, I'm still against it just for those reasons, it's.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes, I would like to move that we as a council show support for continuing the process.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Counsel Whipple with a second by Counsel Christensen, any discussion? On how you'd like to direct um staff to uh. Move forward with the process, Counsel Hoben?
I wasn't gonna say, I was just curious, so George, you and Craig kind of initiated this. What's like, what's the imminent threat in your mind, or is it just like long-term, you just don't want to see it developed, is that the idea? Do you, are you? Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's always possible that somebody could um come to a future mayor. And the future council and say, I want to purchase it and it could be a very seductive. Offer that makes it irresistible and so I think that, what's that? Well, yeah, no, actually, I think that's very appropriate. Uh, yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's kind of what's always been my anxiety, is not that there is an imminent threat, I don't. I don't think they're, they're moving in that direction, but theoretically anyone could. And we already have seen some pretty um big developments up in South Fork. Uh, you know, with bigger homes and so on, it's an extraordinarily attractive place, so I don't see any reason why those pressures aren't gonna continue to mount. So it seemed to me a- and Craig, uh, as we talked about it. And this goes back, as the mayor said, several years that we've been talking about this, that um. You know, something, something needs to be done just to ensure long-term protection. Uh, of of the property for the public benefit. And uh, this, this seems the best way to do it. I was reviewing the appendix A, uh. You know, that we approved uh in regards to lands outside of the city boundaries. You know, that we committed to uh preserve these for the public in perpetuity and manage in a manner that reflects the guiding principles. Of the hillsides and canyons plan and other goals of the council, so I was glad to be reminded that we, you know. That this is, that this, in my mind, is the best way to do that, so that answers.
Yeah, thanks. Other comments or discussion? I think on my part, Malia and staff, uh, to Counsel Bogdan's comment earlier. Related to our watershed, just helping us understand how this helps us maintain that important source.
Yeah.
So if there's no other discussion, I'll call for a vote, the motion is to. Uh, continue uh down this road in this process as it has been presented to us today. Counsel Bogdan?
No.
Counsel Garrett, yes. Counsel Whipple?
Yes.
Counsel Hoben?
Yes.
Counsel Christensen?
Yes.
Counsel McKay?
Yes.
And Counsel Hanley?
Yes.
So the motion passes by a vote of six one. Thank you, Malia, thank you for your presentation and hopefully all right, and thank you administration.
Thank you, Malia and Wendy, very helpful.
Our final item in our work session today is a presentation regarding certified tax rates for Provo City. And this will be presented by our Utah County Auditor Rod Mann. Rod, welcome, thank you for coming.
Thank you. All right, we had our city attorney or our county attorney here last time. That, that one is out of the office this week and his boss, who's gonna come, is with us. But he has a severe case of stomach flu, so he's, he set his alarm to wake up at four. So I called him and he's gonna be listening in if I say anything, or if you have a question that he might be able to answer, he'll, he'll put me right. Um, I do want to start by saying, this problem is of our making, meaning. The out of his office entirely, um, it was our mistake. Um, you, you might think, well, maybe my staff could have found it and and raised a flag. But we don't provide the information necessary for someone else to do that to them. Now, that will change next year, we're gonna improve on transparency and access to data, so you'll be able to double check our work. But you had no ready access to it, so. Uh, this is, this is all on us, not on you or any other city or school or tax entity. And so I just want to make sure that that's really clear, um, because uh. It shouldn't be viewed in any other perspective, so I do have handouts. Um, they're similar to what I gave uh the council, council members. Uh, last week, um, what has happened in the intervening time period is that the school district met. And voted to fix now, so they voted to correct the certified tax rate. Now, and they approved that, uh, so your choice is with respect to you. Can you go to the next slide? I can do that here. Um, your choice is to fix now or have it fixed next year. Um, our recommendation, Bert, I'm gonna have Bert come up because he's, he's the uh. The guy that's been doing this much longer than I have. But anyway, the problem is, we inflated, we created over five hundred million dollars of taxable value within Provo. That was non-existent with the stroke of a pen, if you will, or somebody, some little virus on somebody's computer did it. Um, before we uploaded it to the state, so we got good numbers. And then before we uploaded them, a few of them magically changed and we still don't know how. Uh, we know that they did change, not all of them, but uh, but, and they like Provo, so you've got. The majority of the non-existent value, wh- uh, which represented about five percent of your taxable property value. Uh, which means the tax rate is five percent lower than it should have been. And consequently, you were gonna get five percent less than good and the fix would be to move that about five percent up. And the impact on the average residential home is about twenty-two dollars a year. And the impact on a business that has a million dollars in property is about eighty-ish, eighty-two, eighty-threeish dollars. Um. It, and and we can, you can fix that now with the stroke of a pen, just like we created the problem with stroke of a pen. You can fix it now, or you can choose to defer and have it fixed next year and you can get it all back within one year. Or you can get it all back within, within three years. No, my recommendation is that you fix it now.
Yeah, just, just for clarification, the, the, the solutions that uh were given to us by the state tax mission. Where uh, because Provo School District already voted to fix it now, we are preparing. To send out a correction notice to all res- uh, everyone within the Provo City boundaries and the Provo School District boundaries. Uh, which will then change the uh, uh, certified tax rate. Uh, for the adjusted value and basically bring that up a little bit to realize the revenue. And and the thing here to remember is, we're not, we're not charging people more taxes. We are charging people the taxes they should have been charged in the first place, so the estimated tax that went out in Ja- in July. Was, was lower than it should have been, so yes, Councilman?
Um, I know that the school board already passed a tax increase.
Yes, correct.
So I was just curious legally, because of this mistake, did they decide, oh, not gonna be the tax increase now? Or do they legally still have to stick to the tax increase they voted on?
So what, so how this works is we're not correcting and we're not changing any action that. The board previously took to increase their tax rate. Our advice to that, our, our understanding was no.
And our attorneys said the same thing, this is a fix, you're not, we're not fixing our mistake, we're not. Adding a new timeline to the legislative process.
We are, we are correcting the certified tax. So, so any, so basically any additional revenue that a, that a board or a council would have voted for. Is, would be still be held in that rate, what we're fixing is the underlying base revenue. That was lower than it should, than than it should have been, so we're, we're simply bringing the, the base revenue up to what it should have been had. We not in in uh injected more about, injected basically phantom value into the air. So I just want to go back to the, the fixes here, of course, we are sending out that notice, so there is an option to fix it this year. The, the, the options the of to, to the, to the board is to not make an adjustment to your rate. And you can either claim all of that adjustment in a single year next year, which is done through the. The calculation of the certified tax rate, make sure that uh, the tax missions will put a single year adjustment in there, or it will naturally adjust. Uh, and you'll be uh made whole over the course of three years through the board of equalization adjustment, which is the difference between the May value and. And the end of year value, that change goes into a three-year rolling average. And then that, that uh difference is made up over the course of the next, of the next three years just automatically, so. Those, those are the, there was a lot of, there was a lot of confusion there and there's in the beginning of what we could do or how we could fix it. The, that is, that is what after in-depth legal review from by both the tax mission and the county, uh, those are the options. For uh this council to consider, so.
And there was discussion that with the, at the school board level of wanting to say, okay, let's split the difference. And do a lower rate, but that was, would be injecting a process. The, the, the timelines have already passed, so the, what's available to us is fix it now or fix it later. And with the trust. Um, so then the remedies, uh, well, the impact, there's the impacts, um. We discussed those already, um, here's, uh, the, the raw cost would have been about eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. Had, had, if, if you didn't do a fix, you'd be roughly eight hundred and forty thousand dollars less than you were planning on. Um, and then there's the impact to the home that we discussed. And here's the solution, it was corrected this year, we'll send out correction notices so that they arrive. Before the end of the month, so that people, before they get their tax bill, they'll be warned that. Your tax bill was gonna look different than your valuation notice did. Uh, maybe all three people that do that, I, I don't do that, um, will, will be forewarned. Um, we are extending the tax appeal process, the valuation appeal. Forty-five days from when we send out the notice.
Effectively will be September fifteenth, it will now be November seventh. Yeah, we're, our, our plans to have that notice, uh, that correction notice mailed by, by September third, so that would be forty-five days from September.
Yes.
So um, even though the revenue amount is the same. When we do the correction right away or that we build it in next year, right?
Correct.
Even though the revenue is exactly. Even though the revenue is exactly the same, is there any difference in terms of, and maybe this sounds like a really naive question, but is there any difference in terms of financial impact? Close to that twenty-two dollars and the eighty-three dollars, it can be the same next year?
If you deferred and said, we want to one, we want to fix it in one year, next year, you effectively would take that twenty-two and double it for next year. And then it would go back down to normal the following year. So your residents would get, and I, and I'm just rounding, right? They would get, they'd have a forty-four dollar impact to their tax bill next year as opposed to a twenty-two dollar gone this year.
But that also presumes no other changes to property taxes or any other reason.
That's the changes you control. That's.
I'm just basically, you know, normally under budget circumstances, I'm asking myself, does it cost us more to pay more upfront than it does if we spread it out over a longer period of time? And I'm having trouble understanding the difference it would make to our taxpayers under both of these scenarios.
You would get that twenty-two dollar increase this year, and it would continue forward. And next year, you would get an additional, and we're just rounding there because it might be a little, you would get made whole next year if you chose to, which would mean you'd get a one-time bump. The tax committee, say, tax commission would add to your certified tax rate additional rate equivalent to that hundred, eight hundred and forty K so that you would generate that next year. And then the following year, that would roll out of their equations because it would go back, your certified tax rate would go back to whatever it normally would be. Now, you planned originally on doing it the way you did by adopting the certified tax rate. We're just trying to get you back to your original plan.
And this is an adjustment to the base revenue that's generated by the tax rate. And that's why it kind of doubles the effect next year if you wait until next year, because not only have we got to bring it back up and essentially cost taxpayers that original twenty-five dollars they should have already been paying, but now we've got to add in the twenty-five dollars on top of that to cover for the twenty-five dollars we didn't get this year. So it does have a doubling effect. So maybe there's an incentive to, to do it this year, but again, you don't necessarily have to do that. There is, there is still the three-year option. So it, it, it all depends on what the, what the body feels is the best course of action for it, and we are here to support that.
Yes.
So George, for me, what that would mean, because it comes out of escrow, is that, you know, I wouldn't pay probably as much in escrow this year, but next year it's going to ding me. And it's going to ding me tomorrow. And for every twenty or forty dollars, whatever that is, they're going to charge me extra to replay that, that escrow. So it's not going to be forty dollars a month for me. It's going to be eighty.
This isn't a month, it's a year.
It'll just pay.
Okay, but yeah.
But better now.
I, I, I would prefer personally, as a resident, as a taxpayer, we just get it over with now because next year it'll hit me twice as hard. So I pulled my newsletter people, and it was ten to one to do it now.
Yank the teeth now. Don't let them rot long.
And the school district had the same type of sentiment expressed to them, and their, their change was bigger, and it was overwhelming, overwhelming to fix it now.
Well, the other point to, to what Becky was saying a minute ago is, for people who pay in escrow, they wouldn't see the benefit of the reduction anyway because they're, the escrow company's already taken out enough to pay what it would have been if it was correct, because that's what it was last year theoretically.
And that's also an excellent, that's also a very excellent point, because if the escrow amount is low, if the amount of tax is lower than the escrow amount, and then they adjust the escrow down, then people got it. Then they, then they get, they get a slight, yeah, with, with Provo City's portion, it's not huge, but obviously the Provo School District's portion is much larger, but again, it, it'll mess with the escrow for a couple of years. So.
Very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, the only other thing I was thinking about too is if we don't fix it now, county is determined to make us whole, but we would still have to be spending those funds in our budget right now. And we've got this time value of money issue. I don't hear any proposal that you would pay us interest or anything on what would essentially be a loan to the county to make up for the mistake.
Already say the law's on our side enough.
Right.
With the law stuff.
But it, it have a negative impact on our residents, but there would be a financial cost to the city. We wouldn't actually be made whole if we're paid later on it.
Got it. I am persuaded.
So I was, I'm just going to make this offer, big fat tongue in cheek. If you liked, like deferring and then paying it out over three years, we could arrange to make a similar mistake next year. Not that I'd want to do that, but I'm sure Bert could be persuaded somehow.
Once, once is enough for me, thank you.
And so our remedies, just so you know, going forward, is the part that was manual in this process, we're asking IT to automate that, and they have all the data, they can do it. It just was you didn't, anyway, we're going to do that, and we're going to give you access to the data to be able to check the information we provided to you.
To answer some of the how questions, of course, we're probably rolling around people's minds at the moment. The how is the fact that this process is actually a very manual process that requires the, the copy and pasting of data into spreadsheets to then normalize, to then upload. As crazy as that sounds, that's how we, that's how we generate the data we need for tax rates a year. So the simplest fix is to simply get rid of that, that section of manual process where it has to be transferred from one data source into the new data source. That, that's, that's easy. The second step about that, the, the second, the reason, part of the reason why this was not discovered initially was that instead of having a, a double-check process, it was basically, I, I basically did it all myself, which is, I've done so, done so for many years now, but obviously, that, that bit us this year because this is a vulnerability that needs to be solved. So by eliminating that, by eliminating that manual part, and then also, the other, the other thing I want to do is the, the wonderful nature of, of Google Drive has, has opened up my world. So I'm realizing now that I don't have to rely on someone internally to help me double-check. I can simply ask all the financial directors of all the cities and say, once, right before I, before we upload the data, I just put all the data in the Google Drive and say, see, see, financial, finance directors, check, check my numbers.
Sure.
It's the, the, the thing that drives me nuts about this is the, the solutions are simple, and everyone's going to say, why didn't you think of that before? It's like, well, because we hadn't thought of it before, but we are going to know. So.
We really respect that you owned it, and thank you for that. And I think this has been a crappy couple of weeks, honestly.
Justin? Just real quick for the council's knowledge, or in case you have any questions. So we've worked with the county and drafted a resolution with those updated rates that will be in tonight's night meeting. Just the council will need to vote on to adopt. It seems like there's been pretty good consensus that that's, that's the way you'd like to go is adopt those adjusted rates to make the correction. And Rod and Bert have been willing to come over and give this presentation and then give a, a similar presentation in the night meeting, so the public's there and aware, but. And also willing to allow the city and the school district to review the amended notice.
Yes.
And for any.
We've gotten feedback.
Thank you.
We're not all going to get exactly, but you know, when ten people added it.
I thought that was brave of you to ask for all the input.
And I just kept in mind, okay, it doesn't matter. It's our colony and anyway, we're, we're doing that, but we're got, I thought it was fair, that's us.
Well, and, and the, and exactly, the, the requests were not really, you know, really out of line. It's just like, of course, why, why wouldn't we put them, so, thank you. And the feedback was very helpful, that. To get the language down to, really was the best. And, and, you know, you don't have a lot of space on a four-by-six postcard, so gotta be pretty exact.
And we just don't want to confuse people any more than they already can.
Well, thank you again. Thank you for the presentation. We'll look forward to.
Okay, and we're at the front end of the meeting.
I think so. So about, about five forty, five forty-five, five forty probably.
And I'll, I'll do similar to this. Do you want me to do anything different?
Less is probably more.
Okay, less is more.
It depends on what our audience is.
Right. So. Maybe just the first slide and the last slide.
It's also possible that there will be public comment.
Right.
And when you do public comment.
I'm sorry, not public comment. Will there be questions? Will there be, will, will the public be allowed? Yeah. So there might be public questions that we, you know, we, we won't have you answer it while they're asking it, but after the fact, you may have you come up again and answer some of the questions that they ask.
So there'll be public comment after?
Yes.
That's right.
To the presentation.
And then
right.
Before.
Do the presentation, we ask questions, and then there'd be public comment, and then there's council.
Follow-on. It's going to take a half hour, so. Am I being optimistic?
Maybe, yeah, maybe not.
Might be ten minutes or two hours. Who knows?
It could be two minutes.
Then they're done that, right?
Thank you again.
You're welcome.
The council will now consider a motion to close the meeting. This is one of the ones, those ones, it's a little bit confusing because we actually have two items, but only one of them is announced, and one of them is the RDA. So we're going to have to do a little bit of logistics on there. The, there is a closed meeting item for the council that involves character and confidence of an individual. So that would be a good reason to close the council meeting. So you can go ahead and vote on that, and don't immediately adjourn after, after voting, because then we need to switch to RDA and make another motion. Oh, okay. Thank you, Brian. So I'll entertain a motion to close the meeting.
I'll definitely close this meeting.
A motion by Council Whipple with a second by Council Bogdan. Council Garrett, yes. Council Whipple?
Yes.
Council Hoben?
Yes.
Council Christensen? Is excused. Council McKay?
Yes.
Council Hanley?
Yes.
And Council Bogdan?
Yes.
So that motion passes six zero.
And now do we convene?
Then recess as the council and reconvene as.
No, we'll recess as the council and reconvene as the RDA.
All right. So now it's the RDA Governing Board. It is September ninth, two thousand twenty-five. The time is four thirty-three PM. We will now, let's see, wait. Well, we adjourn the municipal council, but don't we convene? Oh, I am a page ahead. Okay. So now we're the RDA Chair, Governing Board, and we will consider a motion to close the RDA Board Meeting.
Great, thank you.
And Brian will also present the justification for such closure.
That. So we do have another, we have another agenda item, maybe appropriate for closing, meaning this one deals with pending or reasonably not litigation. And so it will be agreed to close the RDA Board Meeting as well.
All right. So do we have a motion to close the RDA Governing Board Meeting?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Board Member McKay?
Yes.
Hanley?
Yes.
Bogdan?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Whipple is yes. Hoben?
Yes.
And Christensen is excused. Okay.
Now recess and.
Reconvene in the functions of this. All right.